Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:05. All members of the Town Council are present. I would ask that you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Legions.
(inaudible)
We have a number of announcements, and I would ask our Town Manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through those, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of dates to remember. Saturday, September 21st will be the Folk and Fiddle Festival. The annual festival will be from noon to 5:00 p.m. at Haynes Park. The rain date will be the following day, Sunday, September 22nd. On Monday, September 30th, we're going to have our second quarterly blood drive. That'll be from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Barrington Library Gallery, and we urge everyone to come out and help support that. On Wednesday, October 2nd, the Town Clerk is sponsoring a Boards and Commissions informational forum to talk about the Open Meetings Act, ethics, and parliamentary procedures. And we're asking all Board and Commission chair personnel to please come to that for that training. On Saturday, October 5th, will be the Great Pumpkin Harvest Festival here at Town Hall at the Government Center from 2:00 to 5:00. There'll be games for the children, there'll be a costume parade, and food trucks. Monday, October 14th is Columbus Day, and all Town offices will be closed. Additionally, it will be our second annual Barrington Day of Caring that will begin at 11:00 a.m. and go to 4:00 p.m. We'll assemble here at Town Hall, and as a community, we will go to different residences in need of support to help some of our elderly residents and some of our impoverished residents improve their living conditions. So everyone's encouraged to sign up and come here for that. And then on Saturday, October 19th, is the Community Shredding Event from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Department of Public Works. You must be a Barrington resident, but all residents are welcome to bring all their shreddable material to Public Works, and we'll get it shredded for you. A couple of additional things. Each of the council members has a packet, and over the next four months, we get a grant from the Rhode Island Department of Health. These are called the Tara Packages. And what they are is they are drug disposal bags. So if you have excess medication, you can put it in this bag, add some warm water, shake it up. It nullifies the effect of the medication and throw it in the trash. So you don't have to bring it to the police station. You can destroy it safely in your own home and not have to worry about ruining the environment by flushing it down the toilet or someone getting their hands on it that shouldn't. So these will be available at most of our festivals and events throughout town through the end of the year. And once again, that's from a grant from the Rhode Island Department of Health. And finally, I had a conference call earlier today with the Department of Environmental Management and with the Rhode Island Department of Health regarding the triple E threat. Many of you may have heard on the news that the man that contracted triple E in West Walk passed away over the weekend from triple E. That's the first death in Rhode Island. The good news is that all the testing, mosquito trap testing that's been done, has shown no triple E in any of the mosquitoes trapped throughout the state. We have one at Department of Public Works that is being checked almost daily, and none of the tests from anywhere in the state. I've given the council members a map, and there are some copies in the back. These maps are the spraying locations that they're now spraying. They've treated surface waters with a BTI, a chemical that kills mosquito larvae. This is adult side, they call it, and what they're doing is aerial spraying to kill adult mosquitoes. The areas in yellow were sprayed last evening, and the areas in red, which is the West Walk and the Central Falls, Batucket area, will be sprayed this evening, assuming the temperature stays above 58 degrees and the winds are right, and the weather forecast looks good. And these are the areas most impacted, and so they're hoping that this will take care of it. The Department of Health recommends that people do spot scheduling, as they refer to it, and if you do need to be out in the hours as it begins to get doc or after doc, make sure you're wearing long sleeves, long pants, and some mosquito repellent. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next series of items on our agenda are what we call the Consent Agenda. These are items, if you have the agenda with you, that are marked with an asterisk. And they're considered routine by the Town Council and enacted by one motion. There won't be any separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Normally, we don't -- I suspect we're going to have a whole bunch of these. I have some. I'm going to pull number seven, number 11, and 13. Does anyone from the council have any that they would like to pull?
Number 10.
Number 10.
Let's call number six.
Okay. Okay. With the exception of item six, anyone from the audience have any that they would like to pull from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none. With the exceptions of items six, seven, 10, 11, and 13, do I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, that's Vice President Wayman.
I'd like to speak to the Town Council meeting minutes of July 29th to make a couple of corrections. Under the public hearing, Town Manager comments from his memo dated July 29th. Down almost at the end, Sean Solley, 31 Woodbine Avenue, spoke, discussed the cost of assisted living. His name is -- his last name is S.O.L.L.E.Y. Down under Discuss an Act on Composting Initiative, Leo Pollock is P.O.L.L.O.C.K. And in the text under Discuss an Act on Composting, I'm quoted as saying Leo Pollock spoke to the Conservation Commission about household pickups in regards to composting, and what it was was townwide household pickups. I'd just like to have that added to it.
Can you just tell me quickly where that is?
Under Discuss an Act on Composting, it's --
It's towards the bottom of page four, bottom of page four, into the top of page five.
Do you see the --
(inaudible).
I just want you to add the word or the word "townwide" before "household pickups," because compost pickups actually have -- are being done on individual -- on an individual basis. Have you got that?
No.
Okay.
This is on page five.
In the middle of the text, or a third into the text, she said that back in October, Leo Pollock --
Yes.
That has to be changed.
Right.
And it's in that same sentence. Spoke to the Conservation Commission about townwide household pickups.
As a full member.
Just to add that word.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Right.
And I think there has to be some sort of reconciliation with tonight's agenda under the Discuss an Act on Interviews and Appointments.
Because it doesn't reflect that they were continued.
No. Well, that may be so, but that's not why I'm -- Under the Resilience and Energy Committee, there were two vacancies, one full member and one and first alternate, and the interview was David Beal and Magnus Thorson. We appointed David Beal.
That's right.
But in tonight's agenda, it still is saying that there's --
If you look at number four, we have Blaise Raine resigning.
Okay, so there was a member who resigned in the interim.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Good.
Any other changes?
Nope.
Okay. With those changes to the minutes of the 7 o'clock meeting of July 29th, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as modified?
So moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next item is item seven. I've asked that those be removed because I wanted to point out something. In the Police Chief's Report, there was a mention of a great arrest, and it was a person who was passing counterfeit bills and had been looking for a suspect throughout, I guess, this area, including Massachusetts, and our police officers managed to arrest this person. Is that right?
Yes.
Congratulations. That was great work. I thought that was worth sort of highlighting because that's the kind of thing that we ought to point out that our police force is doing. That was the only thing I had as to the monthly reports.
I had two items in reports, but then also reports as a whole.
Okay.
It was going to suggest moving the discussion on reports as a whole till after the Consent Agenda, or it can happen in the middle, but --
We can do it now.
Okay. Well, so first was in the Fire Chief's Report, I noticed the disparity between only receiving two instances of mutual support, but providing 25. And I wonder how frequent is it that it's that lopsided? Because it seems we're subsidizing a lot of our neighbors, either smaller or potentially understaffed, fire and rescue departments.
Prior to us putting our second rescue truck into service, there was a disparity in the opposite direction. But since we've put our truck in, second truck for the Barrington residents in service, it's actually swung dramatically the other way, and I keep a 12-month running schedule, and we're at about 120 calls to East Providence in the last 12 months, and they've come to town about around 50 times. So that's a disparity. Last month, it was 25 and 2.
So it's not usually that drastic?
Right. The manager I know has spoken recently to the new mayor, so they're well aware of it. I have spoken to the police -- the Fire Chief, excuse me, in East Providence on this exact subject, and there are moves going on in East Providence to maybe increase their rescue service. I'm hoping, but we still have to realize that we're operating with six or seven firefighters per shift, and when I call for a fire, which gladly doesn't happen very often, I get two engines, a ladder truck, a chief, a safety officer, whatever I want from East Providence. So in those rare instances that we have that building fire that I need help, and I need it now, East Providence is always there to help us out.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest doing less, just encouraging them to maybe do more.
That rescue disparity certainly exists, without question.
Thanks.
If I can add to that, in my discussions with the mayor, he said that they are planning on purchasing and manning two new rescues, which should dramatically change that. The good news is that we get rescue billing, so we do get income from all those rescue calls out of town.
Okay. And then in the Finance Report, it looked like there might have just been some lines missing at the bottom of one of the pages. I'm looking for the section now.
The Finance Director is not here. She's at a conference this week. But where are you referring to missing? On what page of the Finance Report?
I found it. They're not missing. I missed it.
Oh, okay.
I'm good. The other -- so the other reason why I wanted to pull this section was to discuss the report's structure and how they're set up, specifically wanting -- well, first, I think this month's reports are a lot better and I found much more helpful than prior with more statistics and laid out in a way that you can look and see where things are going, either above plan or below plan. But I'd like to see year-over-year and also year-to-date data so that we can then know whether we're tracking above where we usually track or just above for this year. And it's for multiple reports, not just in the financials, but I sent the spreadsheet that I --
I think you all got a hard copy.
Okay. So looking, for example, with building permits and fees to know if we're doing more or less than we did during the given month year-over-year, or more or less than we're doing for what we plan to do. And it would be the same in the Clerk's Office, and then with residential and commercial home sales and things like that. I know that the reports take some time to create the first time around, but then it becomes plug-and-play. But because of the short turnaround time that we have in reviewing the reports between when they become available and when we meet to discuss them, I think having them in a format and with the relevant data already put together, it would ensure that we're keeping our eyes on everything.
Okay. Can I ask about that?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the actual building report, and it does have current, last month, fiscal year-to-date, this month, last year, and last fiscal year-to-date. What is missing from this? What's missing from the existing report that you would like to see in there?
So that's actually the one that is the closest, I think, to what I was looking for, having the variance data. I mean, I could do the math myself, but once it's already in an Excel file before it's converted to a PDF, it's easy to just add that column with the formula in it, and then it displays easily.
So you would mean adding an extra column that would say --
Year-over-year variance, budget variance.
Fiscal year-to-date versus last fiscal year-to-date, then you'd have an extra column that would say difference or variance.
Yeah.
And it would just be the difference between the two?
Yeah.
Plus or minus?
Yes.
So that's the -- and with that change to the building official's report, that's what you'd be looking for?
Yeah, for the building official. Yeah.
Do you want to go through each report and point out which ones are missing the information that you'd like?
Yeah, we can -- yeah. I sent it in advance, so we didn't --
You mean this?
Yeah. So that -- each of the columns there, what I'd like to see, if there's a reason why any of them are hard or not valuable to look at, I'm happy to discuss if the cost of doing it exceeds the benefit that we would find.
Uh-huh.
But I thought just us talking about the reports generally and what information we want to see in them and discuss would be helpful, because I don't know what other people up here find interesting in the reports and what they find helpful.
I'll just make a comment. Having looked at these reports for 15 years now, I do appreciate the change because they seem to be consolidated. My concern, and I'm not a businessperson, I'm a little concerned about this presenting these reports in spreadsheets, which is a very business-oriented way of dealing with the reports. And I think, at least this is the way I feel, that we're getting a little close to micromanaging what is not necessarily -- I think we're less obligated to oversee or manage departments as we are the town boards and commissions. And my concern is that we're stepping a little bit close to what the manager's job is. That's my -- and frankly, if I were handed this, I would have a real hard time focusing on just numbers. I do like to understand what each of these departments is up to, but I appreciate some of the text as well as some of the comparisons. But I'm a little -- I'm leery of going that far into what I do view as the manager's job.
Okay.
I think, you know, we have to be careful about micromanaging everything that goes on in town, but that's my -- that's only my opinion.
I view it as using the information to understand each of the departments and what they're up to. I think if we start trying to influence individual lines and columns on the spreadsheet, that's certainly not within our purview and not what we should be focusing on. But for me, using the data helps give me the big picture, not just the small picture. But I also agree having the pros of --
Not being a businessperson, this would --
Not everyone's fluent in Excel.
Yeah.
I'm only conversant in Excel, so --
But I did really appreciate the consolidation and sort of consistency in all the reports.
Yeah, we can't make them completely consistent, but at least that they're formatted the same, you know? It's a little easier to follow, and we took a lot of the text out and put just the facts in, which is easy. Jacob picking up the mutual aid differences, that was embedded in a paragraph before, so it's easy to see those types of things.
Right. And I agree with that. I think in the past, some departments have been sort of self-promoting in their text or get way too detailed and in prose that I wouldn't bother to read, but I do like this new format.
I do think it's helpful in a format that also includes -- I'm just looking, the PAC Center for Adults Enrichment. I have no idea what their budget is. I think it is helpful as we work -- I mean, one of our bigger tasks here is to set a budget, and it's really helpful to understand what piece of a budget the departments are. And some of your budgets, some of the departments have numbers associated with them, and others don't. So I would at just a minimum like to just see their annual appropriation.
So originally, in the format, I had each department reporting what they had spent in aggregate vice-budget and what percentage, which is how I track it when I look at it. If we're halfway through the year and someone's at 70%, we got a problem. That's not always true. I can tell you Recreation right now is well over what you would expect them to be after, you know, two months of the fiscal year, because they spend most of their money in the summer. So we don't do monthly budgeting. Public Works does all the snow removal, so their budget goes up in the wintertime, conversely. But if I can refer you to page two and three of the Finance Director's Report, Kathy used to give you a 15-page report that had line item by line item. And as I reviewed it, I typically, unless it was something shocking, I would just look at the aggregate. So that's what I asked her to provide you, and you'll see it on her report. It gives what the budget -- this happens to be the end-of-the-year budget, but it tells what was budgeted, what they spent to date, what their balance was, and what percentage. Now, next month, when you get the report for July, it will be a lot different because, you know, it won't be the total year, but you'll be able to look and tell, have they spent 12% of their budget? Are they way over it, or are they well -- 1/12, excuse me. Are they over it or under it? And I think this two-page document, at least, is much more helpful for me in trying to figure out where we are in the budget cycle.
Right. Yeah. With the finance, having it collapsed is definitely very helpful. But that's one where having also year-to-date over year-to-date is also very helpful, because knowing, especially with fluctuations that are often seasonal, both in what we're spending and in revenue collection, knowing where we are in the year doesn't necessarily translate to where we should be in the budget, but if we see where we are over this period of time last year, we know if we're beating it about flat or behind. And that's probably one where it's very easy for Kathy to just drop in a column with a formula, I would imagine.
Instead of requiring the departments to --
So Councilwoman Hearn, this on page one, where you get to the senior center --
Yeah, I mean, jumping between the two, I --
Yeah. So you'd rather have the lines in the individual reports?
Just for ease of reference, but it's not a big -- I mean, she does capture at least the pieces that I'm, you know, most interested in. It would be nice to have a comparison of last year's, but this works for me.
I was actually going to say, I like the longer finance reports with the line item, and I'm less interested in hearing from the departments about their finances, because that's going to be in the Finance Director's Report anyway. And from any individual department, what I'm hoping to hear is, you know, "Chief, what kind of arrests are we seeing? You know, what are people getting in trouble for in town?" Or, you know, "What project is Phil working on?" And I don't necessarily need to hear from Phil where his budget stands, as long as the Finance Director is telling us the line item detail. You know, planning is a little over budget for this time of year, but if I have the line item, I could see, oh, that's because they did a particular project or something. You know, it's nice to see the line items because it tells us some things about our budget that I don't think we'd otherwise understand. You know, one thing I saw last year during the budget season only because of these Finance Reports is the amount of money we spend on clothing as a town, and it's a very large figure. It's nice to see that, and if it was just compressed into a line item for Fire Department, I never would have known. So I think the more detail --
So I think the more detail we can get in the finance report and the more financial information we can get out of all the department reports and really hear from them what they're doing on a day-to-day basis, I think from my perspective, that's what I'd like to know.
Kathy's report, the longer version as well as the shorter version she uses here are both in the can, so to speak. And so I can ask her to continue including the encapsulated one on her report, and the longer version is a separate attachment. So those that want to delve deep or if you see something on the shortened version that you want to, you know, check out where that's coming from, you can go look at the line item one. So that's not an issue. We can do that very simply.
Great. So I guess my view generally is our role is to set policy and to make sure that the operations are running smoothly, but not to operate. And so these reports are helpful for us to get a kind of overview of what's happening and probably somewhat useful for the folks doing them, even if it's a little bit of a pain in the neck when they're doing them, because it helps you to track what's happening. You know? But I would be mortified if I found out that this was taken half a day every month or something like that because the primary goal is to have them operate, to do their work. So I don't want it to become that. But I guess what we could ask is, so far in the... We've talked about adding back what we had before, sort of behind the consolidated report. And then in the building official...
Adding year-over-year.
In a building official, adding a column that just shows the difference. So it's just a formula showing the difference between... So if I go to the building officials...
What specific comparison for the building official are you looking for?
This fiscal year versus last fiscal year.
As far as permits or...
It would just be subtracting. So in this case, it would come out to zero because they were the same. I'm just trying to pull it up.
It would be every row, just adding a column. So it would impact every row, and it would have...
So if you added to the right side of the spreadsheet after last fiscal year-to-date a formula that just found the difference between the last two columns, in this case, 46 and 46, be zero, that's a fairly simple...
No, you're talking about two columns over. Fiscal year-to-date and last fiscal year-to-date. You did last fiscal year-to-date and last month.
Oh, yeah. So it would be fiscal year, so it would be 47 to 46. So you'd show a...
So one more total permit issued.
Yeah. So that would be the third from the right and the farthest to the right, the difference, and that would just be the column. And that's a fairly simple formula to add. I think you'd probably have to make this...
But for each of these, for the dwellings, the garages, the additions, the miscellaneous, the commercial, the...
It adds literally a few seconds of work, but it makes it much more helpful to see. Unless the work is being done outside of this grid and then the numbers are being plugged in separately, but if this is being done in a spreadsheet, it's just dragging copy and paste down.
Yeah. So just so I understand, you're asking for the building officials' report to add one more column. We already compare last month versus this month last year. I think we need to clarify that, but we're making comparisons. In other words, this past month, we had 43 permits. Last year, this month, we had 46. So you're asking for the same thing for fiscal year-to-date?
No, it's already in there. It's already in there.
Okay.
He's asking for variance, the variance. And so I should say, I think it's fine as it is. I mean, it may become more difficult later, but I can see the variance here. But if you added a column with the variance, for example, total building permits issued, you would show plus one. That would be the answer because it would be one more fiscal building permit per year compared to last fiscal year-to-date. And it's just a formula. So it's not a lot of work. I don't need it, but it's simply a formula, and you don't have to... If this is an Excel spreadsheet, you don't have to do any...
Even if it isn't, adding the... I mean, it's a matter of doing the math. So I don't consider that a burden or a problem. And I'm assuming Phil's here, he doesn't either.
So that was that one. What are the other changes that you'd like to see?
It's Dennis, not Phil. Does that ring?
Dennis is the one who does the sheet now.
Right.
I mean, Phil is, because Phil is running the building too.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry.
So it would be basically that same setup for both... I guess all the information in the clerks can also be found in financial, so that's not needed. But in the Tax Assessor's Report, that one also is much closer this month. I'm just pulling it up now. So it's adding a variance, which when it's toward the start of the year, it's easy to see. But when you look at it year-over-year, as we get deeper into the year, it's going to be harder and take much longer to either manually do the math or to gauge whether things are on the upswing or the downswing.
Well, in this particular one, we're looking at the Tax Assessor's Report.
Yeah.
In that one, it doesn't look like he's giving... He's not giving this time last year. He just says 291 sales for all of 2018. So that's not a... That's more of a table than it is an Excel spreadsheet.
Looking at it, I would guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, but because the numbers seem to be pretty close, I was guessing the averages are for the full year and the total numbers are year-to-date? Or were they the full year?
Column to the left is the full year.
Is the full year.
And the column to the left is year-to-date?
Oh, because, yeah. I mean, home sales slow down a lot at the end of the calendar year, so...
This one looks like it might be a lot more work to add those things in because this is... He's just comparing it against the whole year.
Yeah, I don't know much of historic data comes from. If the historic data hasn't been kept, then it's certainly going to... It's not feasible. It wouldn't be worth the cost of doing it. But if the monthly data is somewhere and it can be plugged in, I would find it helpful.
I guess I'm... I mean, if it's adding a column that does the math, that's no problem. That's a no-brainer. But if it's calling on collecting data and putting it in there, and I'm not sure, from my point of view, this is perfectly adequate as-is. It tells me what I need to know. I don't know if other...
I would agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, again, if it's not data that's readily available, then it's not worth collecting. But if it is, putting it in the report adds a more clear picture. And I'm fine leaving it at that. And Jim's call.
Well, I think that leaves sort of an awkward... Him in an awkward position, frankly. I think... I don't know. I think you either have to ask for it or, you know...
I think it's fine to say, I'm not asking for this at the cost of somebody spending a lot of time to put it together. But if it was tracked somewhere and it's already on a spreadsheet somewhere or something we've already recorded, then it's easy to add to the report. But I don't want somebody taking time to research it.
I can have that discussion with the tax assessor, and if it's easily available, we'll add it in.
Yeah.
You can use the assessor's database. It has a sales feature, and you can search the sales between a particular date. So if I was curious about, you know, how many sales we had had up until September 9 last year, you could punch that in. It would come up with all the sales and everything like that.
Do I have access to that?
Yeah. It's just in the assessor's database online.
Okay.
But the headline here for me is the number of personnel in his office is 1.5. So that's, I think, going to stretch them. I don't want them to spend a day doing that, but that's where we can find it.
Were there other reports that you'd like to see changes?
No, I think that's good.
Okay. So with those, if you go back and see how difficult that is and...
Make the adjustments. And this can be an intricate process. I mean, as you find things that are less valued, they can be pulled. If you're looking for other data that is readily available, we can add. But we'll continue with this current format through next month and see if we can add the data that Council Breyer has requested.
Now, one of the things that I noticed in the changed reports, I think, unless I missed it, is the solar. I liked seeing the solar.
Me, too.
And that wasn't in this version, I don't think. So if we could add that back in, I don't know how much trouble that was, but it was nice to see the number of permits issued for solar.
I don't... That's not a problem.
I would agree with that, and I would also like to point out that at our last meeting, I asked for DPW to begin to list the number of trees that had been planted rather than the number of trees that had been removed or inspected. And I was pleased to see that that was... That data was noted and that 12 trees have been planted.
So I don't think there were actually any changes to the reports themselves. We just highlighted a couple of things and talked about format. So unless I'm... Please correct me if I'm wrong.
May I move to accept the reports as written?
Yes. Actually, I just wanted to comment on one of them, and this was the Senior Services Report. And this is a very helpful change to have the number of participants in these activities. And it struck me that out of all the activities put on by the Senior Center, the Center for Adult Enrichment, the most popular was lunch at 232. But not far behind at 161 was chair yoga and cardio classes at 125. And then after that, it was bridge at 81. And if you look at the numbers generally across the board for all the different activities, it seems to me that physical and mental fitness were sort of at the top of the list for the activities. And I wonder if we couldn't explore ways to make sure that we're incorporating more of that, having as many opportunities as possible. I mean, those numbers are huge disparities in terms of how popular those activities are versus other activities that are offered. And so maybe there's a big opportunity there to offer more of that.
Yeah, I'd also like to point out, on that same report as the dialer program, which previously has been run by the Senior Center Advisory Board and has moved over to Michelle's Arena in the Center for Adult Enrichment, and 78 clients served last year. We also received a donation of $20,000 from an anonymous donor to support that program through the year. Generally, most people will pay for the dialer. It's a matter of us paying the installer. If someone is in need, dispenser trust or from the dialer program itself, if this fund's available, we'll pay for someone that needs it and can't afford to have it installed. But that's a very successful program in our community, and I hear calls, rescue calls once a week probably about, you know, someone hitting a dialer. Usually, thankfully, it's accidental, but you know it's available if they need it.
Right. For anyone who doesn't understand what that is, it's that kind of help alert thing where they have a button that will allow them to reach the fire department, the rescue, right away. Next item on the agenda is...
We haven't approved...
Oh, we didn't actually...
I'm waiting for a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item 10... Oh, yes, item 10. You wanted to recuse.
No, that's 11 and 13 I need to recuse.
Oh, okay. Item 10 was Council Breyer.
Yes.
So the notice we got from Glenise Souza regarding... So it seems as though she... He... She is requesting a senior exemption for a subsequent time and asking that the notary not be required. Is that by law that we have to require a notary and that we have to require a senior exemption to be renewed?
Yeah, maybe I can respond. So it's not required by law. It was put in place so that there was a way to enforce compliance in the event that someone was not truthful in filling out the form. If it's a sworn statement with notary, it would give me the ability to pursue that legally if I had to. Not every town requires it. A lot of towns do for the purpose that I just told you. Now, having said that, I've never had to bring a case for a false sworn statement on something like this.
Although we do know that that's happened in one of the... And when we say false, it's not necessarily... In the past, when we weren't requiring the annual renewal, you could very easily have a situation where someone applied for, received this while they were a resident, and then some five or six years later said, you know what? I'm going to stay at my place in Florida for most of the year, and you're no longer a full-time resident in Barrington and not entitled to it.
Correct.
And so they might not be aware that they're no longer entitled to that, and they were still receiving it. So that's... And there are, unfortunately, some folks who would come in and apply for it while driving a car with Florida license plates, so that does happen.
It's pretty amazing. You know, it makes people think twice before they fill out the form. And I think that if someone has a problem with a notary, they also have the ability, hopefully, to come to Town Hall, right, and get it notarized.
Actually, Mary's team has done house calls. And that's my concern with notaries is that, you know, our most elderly people are the ones that we're asking to go out and get this thing notarized, who have the most difficulty with it. And, you know, for the most part, it's people that get a $200 exemption. And it takes a lot of processing time for the Tax Assessor's Office to process these applications. And, you know, I've asked Steve, we had a discussion earlier today, about having the Tax Exemption Subcommittee reconvene to look at the process to see if the squeeze is worth the juice in the sense of having these applications have to be renewed every year, not only for the pain inflicted upon... For the hassle for the applicant, but also for the processing requirements. And I think somewhere in the middle is where we need to be to try and get it. I've asked Mike, you know, is it possible to just give a stern warning on the application that says, you know, you signed this under penalty of law? As he said, he's never prosecuted one, so is it really worth the hassle that they have to go through to get something notarized, especially if they're having trouble with, you know, getting around town?
Yeah. I think it is a good recommendation. We work through the committee. I'll work with you, Steve, and the committee, and Jim, and come up with something.
Good. Anything else on the correspondence?
No, that was it.
Do I hear a motion to accept the correspondence? Oh, please, come forward.
Anne Strong, 55 Teet Avenue. I would like to request that the Town Council read into the record correspondence from Lisa Dapp regarding the advisory opinion issued by the Rhode Island Ethics Commission. I think it's important that, as there has been a lot of conversation about this at the Financial Town Meeting and in the press and amongst some members of the Town Council subsequent to her appointment, that there are... subsequent to her appointment, that there are folks in the audience tonight, but there are a lot more citizens that also watch this over the course of the next month on, on television. And I think it's important that it, this not be relegated to a consent agenda item. I think it's important that it is read into the, to the live record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Daft, I, I think that this is an issue where someone raised a question about whether Dr. Daft could be a, a member of the Committee on Appropriations because her husband is a vice principal at the high school. And if, if you've read through the opinions of the Ethics Commission, it's really clear that that's not a conflict. It might sound like a technical conflict, but it's very clear it's not a conflict. And both when this happened and when Dr. Douglas was on the Committee on Appropriations, there were issues raised about this. I don't have a problem, I guess, with somebody saying, is that technically allowed? The tone of it, though, was unfortunate. And when I saw this, this opinion from the Ethics Commission that, that, as they've done in the past, pointed out that there clearly was no conflict of interest, I said to Jim, I wanna, I thought we should highlight this a little bit. But Jim had already spoken with Dr. Daft, and she decided she wanted to let it drop. So she's, you know, I'm very grateful for anyone who's volunteering their service, but we're not gonna read that into the record at Dr. Daft's request. So with that, is there anything further on correspondence, or do we hear a motion to accept it as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item 11. Renewal of license agreement for Bradley and Megan Whalen. And the reason that I asked to pull this is only because Counselor Boyagen is having to recuse himself because of law firms involved in this and some, not in this, but somehow connected with this. Does anyone have, wanna talk about this, or do we wanna just have the motion?
Motion to renew.
Okay.
I second.
First of all, Anne Strong, 55 Teet Avenue. My reading of it, it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, that's why I'm up here. There is, a resident is using town property? Is that, and this is an agreement?
The resident has a dock on the pond. The pond is town property.
Okay. And how long has this been in effect?
My office actually did research on this many years ago. We actually, the town hired a title attorney, John Murphy, to look at all of those properties. Long story short, technically, the town owns the property along the shore, and the docks were going over town property. And the suggestion from our office at the time was not to do a lease, which has a lot of rights that go with it, but to do a license, which is revocable at any time if it's abused. It was also causing an issue for these individuals who just had absolutely no idea when they purchased their house that the dock was extending from their property into the town property. So that's what the license agreements are. Licenses are issued by the council and can be revoked at any time by the council. Like I said, there's no set time period like a lease, for instance, and there are many more legal benefits that go with a lease. So that's what it's all about.
So in fact, Brookyard Pond is a lot, and it's, it's whatever circumference or whatever it is.
Right.
Because most of the time, freshwater, the lots, the property lines extend out into the, into the X number of feet, not like in the plastic thing here. So that's interesting, and I'm amazed that, I mean, in all the zoning things that I've been involved in in this town, and all the planning board and blah, 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 I have never seen this. This is interesting. And I guess, do you know how many people on Brookyard Pond have...
Yeah, pure memory because it was so long ago.
I understand.
Several. By several, and I don't know if you know if it was five, seven, four, I mean...
Less than 10.
There we go, less than 10.
And I didn't, I didn't see it, they, they are mandated to hold, provide a certificate of insurance for the activity to the town?
No, they're not.
They should.
No, they're not.
I mean, when, when there are functions on town property, those...
Thank you. So Jim is, is showing that the license requires, although not a certificate of insurance, it does require an indemnification.
Oh, I think you should require a COA with...
So if something happened, we could go.
Yeah.
But, but it's not exactly the, right, no, no actual certificate adding the town...
As an additional insured. Yep. Thank you.
The motion's been made. Has it been seconded?
Yes.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one is the Allens family, the burial ground delineation. Again, this one was pulled because, for Counselor Boyagen. Does anyone wanna discuss it, or just make a motion?
I do. Well, I actually, I wanted to ask if anybody from the Allens family was here and wanted to speak to it.
I know. It looks like the developer did all the due diligence and the survey.
Yes, the developer did everything they were supposed to do with the archaeological study. And the statute does require, once the archaeological study is complete and there's a finding that there are no grave sites or anything in the area, it does require a vote from the council to allow digging or some kind of change to the landscape by the owner. So that's why it's on here for town council approval. And I would recommend it.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was somebody from the family that wanted to speak before we voted to dig there, and seeing that there isn't, I'm fine.
Okay. Motion to...
Withdraw.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to withdraw the cease and desist order and allow Bay Spring Realty Company to continue its environmental mitigation adjacent to the Allen burial ground.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the next item on our agenda is the Bristol County...
Did, did you have a vote on the renewal of the license agreement? We talked about it. You actually voted, thank you.
Yes, we did vote, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is the Bristol County Water Authority report. Chairman Klepper, thank you for your patience.
Any questions about the report?
I, I did. Does anyone else have any questions? I'm just curious. Lawyers were trained to see everything bad that could happen. So down the road, if there is another leak in this pipe, the PVC pipe that is being run in there, at that point, would it be a candidate for this other flexible pipe that we tried and they were concerned about a tear on, on one of the...
Probably not, because you could only then put even a still smaller pipe on the inside. So it would be insufficient for the volume of water that's necessary.
Okay. And then I, I was just curious, how do you get the PVC to, to go around those bends? Is this a different type? It doesn't?
The angles where it comes out of the water and then has to be straightened, that will be, it'll be cut and an angle will be put in, fused to it, and then the straight piece will go on.
Okay.
So it doesn't go around corners. It's a very gentle slope. It can handle that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Klepper, I have one question, if you don't mind, Mr. President. At one point, there was a discussion about the, if there is, was an insurance claim for the damage due to an earthquake. And it was kind of made in jest, but I think BCWA was going to pursue that. Have they pursued that?
Nothing, nothing. I'm not aware that any response has been given at this point.
Okay.
Couple of quick points.
Sure.
Today, we signed, the secretary and I signed the bonds, the $18 million bonds. It's gonna be put right on my iPhone Friday. And, and we had a special meeting this afternoon where we awarded that contract for the overall general management of the process. That was done this afternoon. We expect to start near the end of September and to be finished before Thanksgiving. As usual, there will be a lot of information publicly, letters, notices, everything will come.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is also BCWA. This is the pilot agreement. This is the agreement that expired, and we negotiated a renewal of this. And I wondered if any members of the council had questions or concerns about the draft, the proposed renewal. This has been adopted by Bristol and I think Warren? I'm not sure if Warren has yet.
Warren has not yet.
Yeah, but it's on their agenda maybe next week.
I think later this week, actually.
Yeah, maybe later this week. Bristol has adopted it, and BCWA has also approved. What happened was my office made some revisions, so it had to go back to BCWA. BCWA approved the revisions, and Bristol did too. So now it's before you and probably Warren later this week.
Okay. Does anyone in the council have questions?
I was, I was wondering where the, where the numbers came from for scaling back the, the pilots, because each, each year, it seems it's been a net positive to the town. And I understand that the majority of Barrington taxpayers are also BCWA ratepayers. But with the numbers, I just, I don't, I don't see the numbers relating likely to a rate decrease from BCWA. But all else equal, it is certainly a very minor, but a tax increase. And so by removing these, I'm, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding what the benefit is.
So because this is coming out of the same pocket, we didn't feel that we were trying to have a zero-sum game. We were working cooperatively with the Bristol County Water Authority, all three towns. We agreed that you could do this a couple of ways. The cooperative way, which was to negotiate, as we did, removing the cost of fire hydrants, which is substantially higher in some communities than we were currently paying, and which we could have faced if we had gone on without a pilot agreement. There was no cap on that, and that could have been calculated differently. So we no longer will be paying for that, and they will no longer be paying payment in lieu of taxes. They're gonna cancel out. We could have done it the cooperative way, that way, or we could have at great expense and great debate tried to calculate what the actual taxes would be on the infrastructure of the Bristol County Water Authority. Whenever you get into that kind of thing, you're starting to cost taxpayers, who are also the ratepayers, a lot of money. Because the taxpayers and the ratepayers are the same people, I suppose if, if I could have negotiated with Chairman Klepper and I could have somehow gotten him to accept a tripling of our payment in lieu of taxes, that would have meant a substantial increase to the ratepayers, and that would just sort of cancel out any benefit that we would have had to the taxpayers from my superior negotiating skills. Instead, we decided to try and give the, the ratepayers a break. We won't have the ratepayers also see any kind of surcharge for fire hydrants. That's also in the agreement. So we, we wanted to make clear that the fire hydrants were getting paid for by the payment in lieu of taxes.
So I, I think I picked up a benefit within what you were saying, so just let, let me know if this understanding is right, that while we're, we're sure to write off the, what's currently $26,600 in net benefit, we're also protecting against that swinging in the other direction, that it wouldn't have necessarily been a net benefit every year?
Well, that's right. I don't know whether it would have been or not, and the way to know that is a very expensive study that we could have done as to the infrastructure and the comparison. We did some kind of ballparking and got some numbers on what other communities pay for their fire hydrants, and they're higher. They pay more than, than we were paying. I should say, we are paying until this agreement is in place. So we could see that higher. Yes.
Studies in the past from national consultants have indicated we should be getting somewhere around 23% of our building. We're getting around 6%. You can see that the pressure from what the consultant says, we should be raising, we should be raising those rates. So now we get into raise, 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 who we hurt and who we benefit.
Right.
Just compliment the president for seeing that and working this process out.
I didn't doubt there was a benefit. I wanted to know what it is before I voted.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to ratify the 2019 BCWA pilot agreement, retroactive to July 1st, 2019, and expiring on June 30th, 2029.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. One step closer. The next series of items on our agenda are to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. And the first one is for the Cemetery Commission, Suzanne Shiro. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Shiro.
Shiro. Please come forward. Thank you for coming in tonight. Could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Cemetery Commission?
Right. So I am by profession an archaeologist. For the past 30 some-odd years, I have worked in Rhode Island in the field of historic preservation for a private nonprofit company that's based in Pawtucket, Rhode Island. And as part of my job, I have worked on, worked with other communities throughout Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Connecticut, all over New England and the mid-Atlantic area. And I have helped those communities in historic preservation and protection of, of their own cultural resources, including historic cemeteries. And I, I, I think this is long overdue. I'm taking the opportunity of the vacancy on this commission to finally come forward and offer my expertise to my own community, which I'm kind of embarrassed that it's taken me this long to come forward. But I, I am hoping that I can contribute knowledge and, and skills, and I'm well-versed in historic preservation laws in the state of Rhode Island and at the federal level as well. So I, I think I can help interface, like with the Rhode Island Cemeteries, Historic Cemeteries Commission, the Rhode Island Historic Preservation Commission. I have colleagues throughout, you know, those organizations and agencies, and, and I think I can bring some, you know, level of expertise to, to my own community after all these years.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Did you actually work on the Allens?
I did not. My company did.
Yeah.
Which I, I think is kind of how this all prompted me to step forward. All of a sudden, the light bulb went off, and I said, geez, I, I should really be helping out my own town. I've lived here for 25 years, put three children, you know, through the public school system. They're all in college now, so I certainly have benefited greatly from living here in Barrington, and it's time for me to give back.
Well, we appreciate that you stepped forward very much.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Suzanne Shiro to the Cemetery Commission as a full member to fill an unexpired term with the date of November 30, 2020.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next item is for Discover Newport, and we have one full member and we have two applicants. So I'd ask if Elizabeth Buckley is here? Please come forward. Thank you for coming in tonight. Could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to Discover Newport?
I have 30 years' experience in the hospitality industry. I have a bachelor's degree from Johnson &amp; Wales in hospitality and travel tourism management. I have a bachelor's degree from Johnson &amp; Wales in Hospitality and Travel Tourism Management and I have my MBA from there as well. I also lived and worked in Newport for 10 years. I had a small business there and I was on the Bowens Wharf Merchants Association, as well as on the Winterfest Committee that they had there. I also was the Director of Partnership Development at the Providence and War at Convention and Visitors Bureaus. So I do understand how the Bureau works, what their mission is, what their growth is like and the impact that that has on communities. In my position there, I also work with the statewide tourism boards on visitor information as well as a couple of cultural events, the Federal Hill Stroll and also the inaugural launch of the Jackaline Spectacular. So I know how those large-scale events work and how those also impact communities. I currently work part-time and so I don't have a problem making those Tuesday morning meetings that they have every three weeks. I really love this industry and love Newport. I've lived here in Barrington for the last six years, have volunteered in the schools and on some of the trash pickups and all those kinds of things. So I thought this would be a great way to serve the community.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Sure, thanks.
We also have Alicia Kelly Curry. Ms. Curry?
Alicia.
Alicia, sorry.
My name's Alicia Curry and I have been a Barrington resident for 16 years, but was born and bred in Barrington and then lived in Newport. It's almost like a repeat. I have a tourism degree from the University of New Hampshire and lived and worked in Newport and, and worked for the Economic Development, or volunteered for the Economic Development Office down there way back when. I think that we as Rhode Islanders forget how close everything really is and there's so much wonder and spectacularness in our state that, that getting everyone on the same page is, is really important. We can all bring a lot of value to each other. And I think that, you know, while both of us have, have great experience in both communities, I don't envy you having to decide with us sitting right here. But I think it's very important and I would really enjoy kind of bringing it all together.
Thank you. We have an embarrassment of riches.
We do. This is a tough one. Maybe they could share it or something. I don't know how you make a choice here.
Liaison committee?
Nobody. Or?
For Discover Newport, we don't have a liaison. That is, we have one, one person that we appoint for that Discover Newport Committee and we don't have a council liaison. This is a tough one.
Mr. President, I, I'm trying to research it here. I'm not sure we're restricted to one. We'd have to do a little bit of research, but my, my thought, having spoken to the previous representative, it's kind of like the Chamber of Commerce and we have someone that shows up at the meetings and represents our community. I'm not sure we'd be restricted from having two people show up and to represent our community. And so with your permission, I'd, I'd like to try and research that and see if we can't get two very qualified people to represent us there. We, we need more representation in that organization and if we get two voices, all the better.
Yes.
I've always, actually, I've always felt that, that we were underrepresented, especially given that it's all located in Newport. I think, I think two capable voices would be to our advantage.
I think that makes a lot of sense. If, if you can be patient for a while, we'll find that out and I guess we can decide on that at our next meeting, which is only three weeks away.
Really?
It's the ninth, so.
Yeah, that's right.
So thank you both and we will decide at our next meeting and hopefully if we'll appoint So the next person is for the Harbor Commission. We were fortunate to have a member of the Harbor Commission become our Harbor Master. Unfortunately, every time that happens, every time we have somebody move from a committee, we, we lose someone on that committee. So we have one vacancy for a full member and is Mr. Evans here? Brad Shaw Evans, please come forward. You tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to the Harbor Commission.
Sure, I'm Brad Evans. I live at One River View Drive. I'm interested in being on the committee. I'm an avid voter. I have two votes on 100 Acre Cove. I'm also an avid fisherman. I pretty much can fish every, every weekend. My previous, when I lived in New Jersey, I was also the fire chief for my town. So I was responsible for obviously everything that had to do with that. I'm qualified in ASMAT. I've also had a certain Level Command III, NIMS. I've got a whole host of stuff, but we also had a lake and we were charged also with ICE Rescue, so I'm familiar with that. So a lot of things that would probably do well with a committee.
Okay. Great. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Brad Shaw Evans to the Harbor Commission.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The next one is Housing Board of Trustees and Ronnie Phipps. Ms. Phipps here. Please come forward. Thank you for coming in tonight and thank you for offering to serve on the Housing Board of Trustees. We really need folks on that. And I noticed that you've also offered to serve on the Planning Board, so won't make you come up twice.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little about yourself and what you could bring to the Housing Board of Trustees?
Yeah, I didn't know this was going to be like this. No, I see. So I wasn't, I'm interested in the Housing Board of Trustees to help with the affordable housing that we're building in Barrington. I think that we could have more economic diversity of our citizens. I've lived here for 35 years and, you know, it gets less and less affordable for new people coming in every year. I have experience with all kinds of people. I worked on the outreach team for Health Source Rhode Island, informing people all over the state about health insurance opportunities that was income-based and so I'm pretty familiar with different populations. But I don't really have anything else to say. I, I thought it was, you know, I used to serve on the school committee and I thought I haven't been involved in the community for a while at a volunteer level, so I thought it would be good. I saw the ad in the Barrington Times, I thought I'd answer the call.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm, because you, you mentioned the Planning Board as well, it, it has occurred to me that the Planning Board does not have someone who is currently on the board that is familiar with the whole, the affordable housing component to planning. And I just wondered if, if you would consider both boards?
Yeah, I would.
Because the Planning Board is a, is an alternate position. It's, it's, you know, it could be years before you ever would advance to, to serve as a full And I, I do think that, I mean, the Housing Board really does need full members, but it would be great to have someone be on the Planning Board who knew, who watched out for, in the applications for affordable housing. So I just, I just wondered if you were?
Sure, I would be happy to.
Okay. I'd, I'd just like to have that.
Okay. Thank you.
Consideration.
You haven't lived until you've had your arm twisted by Kate into joining a committee.
She's my neighbor.
So I noticed that you were on the Temple Havenin Board. Is that right?
I am.
I had a conversation with somebody, this is, you'll see where I'm going, about Rabbi Lamb. Do you know Rabbi Lamb? He was apparently, he's retired, but I think he was at Temple Havenin. Anyway, the reason I was asking is because I had a.
Flan.
Flan.
Flan, Alan Flan. He lives in Barrington. He was, he worked in Brown in the Swire Center. He was not a rabbi at the temple.
Oh, oh, somebody told me he was. Anyway, this is a gentleman who was very interested in housing issues.
And he is, right.
And so.
We've worked together before.
So do you think you might be able to recruit him to the Housing Board of Trustees?
Oh, you want me calling? Ah, I got it.
I just had a conversation with somebody, his name came up and, and that.
I'll reach out.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Ronnie Phipps to the Housing Board of Trustees as a full member?
No, we're not going to, we're not going to take comment. Go ahead.
As a full.
I, I think you're wrong to do that. Absolutely wrong. I think you have serious ethical issues with this candidate and you need to make a comment.
You know what? This isn't going to be your forum to defame anyone.
I'm not going to defame them. It's all public record.
You don't understand that.
I have a right to make a comment.
You'll, you'll have an opportunity to make a comment at the public comment section. You don't have the right to make it now.
Absolutely. This is when the, when the candidate is under consideration.
So appointments, council responsibilities and appointments are not open for, open, I mean, you do not have to allow public comment on appointments.
Thank you.
But during, as you said, during the public comment period, people can come up and comment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ronnie Phipps to the Housing Board of Trustees as a full member with an unexpired term date of July 31, 2022.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is for the Planning Board is Mariana Silva Buck here. Please come forward. Thank you for coming in tonight. Can you tell us what you hope to bring to the Planning Board?
Sure. I just recently moved to Barrington, so as a new resident, this has been the place that I chose to live and raise my daughter. My parents fell in love with the town and I think, I'm an MBA and I have a lot of business background and as the mother of the youngest entrepreneur in Barrington, who is right there, sitting there, I think I'd love to, to be a part of building the community and bringing my expertise into making the community, not only be the place that I want to raise my daughter, but to create the, the town that other people might want to come also and raise their families. And being a part of helping plan the buildings, bringing business, share those ideas and then be on that board, I think would be absolutely incredible. I just want to be more integrated with the community as much as I can.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't, not a question I just wanted to add. I met Mariana a while ago, a few months ago, and after a brief conversation, recommended right away that she get in touch with Larry Trim and Phil and she met with them to learn more about the Planning Board and, and what it would be and they both had positive things to say. Actually, I'm, I'm speaking for Phil there. Larry responded, not that Phil didn't, but Larry is the one who, who did. Just wanted to add that.
Great. Well, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you so much.
I, I'd just like to make a comment that it was at the last, it was at the Trails, at the Trails Ad Hoc Trails Meeting, one of the members of the Planning Board is the, is the liaison to that group and I was asking him how he felt about, he's a fairly new member, how he felt about the, the Planning Board and he said, you know, he really enjoyed it, he thought it was, it was doing well, but the one thing that he thought they could use is a woman. And I think we have a wonderful opportunity here to appoint two.
And I just, I want to clarify on the issue of alternates. The way that alternates work is alternates do not have a vote unless there's not a quorum without that alternate. So the full members, if they all attend, the alternates can participate in the discussion but do not have a vote. And if, as often happens, a full member is absent, then the first alternate could vote. And if two members are absent, then the first and second alternate can vote. So that's the way it works. So.
I, I make a motion to appoint Mariana Silva Buck as the first alternate with an expiration, is that there? I don't, I don't have that up.
May 31st.
With an expiration of May 31st, 2021. And to appoint Ronnie Phipps as the second alternate with an expiration date of May 31st, 2021.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for your willingness to serve and we really appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the Resilience and Energy Committee. We have two vacancies, one full member and the first alternate is Joseph Berryhill here. Please come forward. Thanks for coming in tonight. I, I read on your resume why you're, your application, why you're so interested in this, but please tell everyone else why you're interested in this committee.
Sure. Well, I'm a clinical and a community psychologist, so I have expertise in humans and communities and behavior change and it strikes me that energy and resilience is one place where we vitally need that kind of change to occur. I also have a, a bit of a background, I've done research and framing of public policy issues and I think a lot of us are well aware now that there's a huge discrepancy between what the scientific community says is the reality of energy use and climate change, these issues, and what public opinion is. So I'm interested in trying to understand those differences and how we can make change there so that public policy can line up behind science. I, as a clinical psychologist, also on a personal note, I, my specialty's anxiety. I sometimes work with kids who have anxiety about global warming. I have thought, you know, I'd rather not just try to one by one help everybody move past their fears, but see if we can generate wider change. So I've served like on the Civic Alliance for a cooler Rhode Island and we're living in a community that's surrounded by water. We're needing to make some changes and it'd be my pleasure to serve on the committee.
Great. Thank you. I, I can tell you that my work on resilience, when you talk to the FEMA people, one of the things they say is it's very easy to talk about resilience after the storm, it's kind of hard to talk about it before the storm.
Very much so.
So, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you very much.
And Magnus Thorson, please come forward. Thanks for coming in tonight. Can you tell us what you hope to bring to the, the committee?
Good evening. I am a professor at Johnson &amp; Wales. I've been teaching sustainability for the last nine years. I have a PhD in sustainable practices and more specifically how you, how to motivate people to practice sustainability. So my work focuses on how to change people's minds and how to motivate businesses and communities to incorporate that in their daily life. I've served on town committees for, going on two years and I did the same in Vermont where I was a town council member for two terms and I hope to continue my work with them.
Any questions?
Just want to say that Magnus has been a very, a great asset to the Conservation Commission and he's also chairing the Ad Hoc Trails Committee quite successfully. Commission, and he's also chairing the Ad Hoc Trails Committee quite successfully. I, I think this, as much as I don't want to see him leave either of those other boards, I do feel that this is right down his alley.
Great. Thank you very much. So, again, an embarrassment of riches, but we have two positions, one full member and first alternate. I, I can say, as a practical member, I'm the liaison to that committee. I think everything's done by consensus, so there's just a lot of talking, and when a vote comes, it's always unanimous. Everybody works out that, so having an alternate, being an alternate doesn't mean you're not participating, and, and you also have lots of times when folks aren't present, so it almost really doesn't matter. But do I hear a motion to--
You should probably make that motion.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to appoint Magnus Thorson as a full member of the Resilience and Energy Committee with a term to expire-- November 30th, 2021?
So, uh--
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And the next one is, I'd like to, I'll, I'll make the motion myself, to move that Joseph Berryhill be appointed as the first alternate for the Resilience and Energy Committee with the term--
Same thing.
For 20, November 2021. November 30, 2021.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you both.
Absolutely.
Next item on the agenda is to interview for the Senior Services Board. We have, again, two folks going for vacancy as the second alternate. Is Mary Kay Chapin here? Please, come forward. Thank you for coming in tonight. Can you tell us why you're interested in the Senior Services Board?
Thank you. I first became interested in the senior center when I joined, and I realized there were, we could extend the services to attract more seniors. There is no bocce court in this area, and yet we have land that would provide for it. It's a very easy thing, and it's really enjoyed by the seniors. Also, I drive all the way to Marion, Massachusetts to play croquet. I would like very much to see if there was a croquet court available, which is a little more expensive, but I understand the senior advisory committee is able to raise extra money on the outside, which I helped David, I helped at the Barrington Library, the second floor story. We raised over $3 million with Debbie. I was one of the principals. Also, I started playing mahjong at the senior center, and the games are missing tiles. So, I went out and bought my own, and I would like to help make it a little more attractive for the seniors. I have a history in, run my own businesses. I worked for Gorham Textron. I'm now retired, and I really would like to be a help, help the, the seniors.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Is Eleanor Earl here? Thank you for coming in tonight. Can you tell us why you're interested in serving on the Senior Services Advisory Board?
I would like to immensely, but I think my predecessor knows a lot about it, has wanted to be on it for a while, and I'm new here, and I simply saw an ad for an alternate, and it was that word that, that really decided me, because I knew I could go to the committees and learn about Barrington and not vote. But I think she should have it.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
As the liaison to the Senior Services Board, members of the public are not only welcome, but encouraged to attend, and there, there are members of the public that do come to our, to the meetings, and we'd love to have your input. And I, I also love Ms. Chapin's ideas of bocce and croquet--
Croquet.
And mahjong. I, I think that's fantastic. So, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mary Kay Chapin to the Senior Services Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term date of November, November 30, 2021.
That's the recommendation of Mrs. Earl. I'll second that.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This is a two-minute statement. The agenda items for members of the public to speak. Please indicate you'd like to speak by raising your hand. When recognized, please approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record. I should say that, based on my experience in the law, there's, the First Amendment is a very broad thing, and there's no such, the courts do not allow for prior restraint, so everyone is free to say what they want, but there are always consequences to what they say. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Please come forward.
My attorney's in the audience, so I think I'm safe. Anne Strong, 55 Teed Avenue, and I took, take that last comment as a threat, and I think you should be ashamed of yourself. I've sat up there at one time. I sat on the Planning Board for about eight years, sat on the Conservation Commission for many more years than that as chair. I not once had an ethics violation handed down by the Attorney General against me. One of the people that you appointed tonight did. And you know who I'm talking about. And I think it's a shame, as an organization that certainly takes great pride, in its seemingly great pride, in its adherence to open meetings and ethics, as witnessed by the October 2 workshop, that you would do such a thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please, come forward.
Good evening. My name is Beth Sblane. Live at 4 Rumstick Circle. We've lived here for about 15 months. First, I wanna say thank you for your service, because I've never been to a meeting like this, and it's tough to be in your shoes, so I don't envy you that. Value your time, and I will be brief. My name is Beth Sblane. My husband and I are one of many who have been affected by Mr. Menardi's recent decision regarding the changes in timing and methodology of real estate assessments. After months of research and meeting with people who have been similarly affected, my husband and I will be submitting our appeal by the end of this week. I'm before you today because I want you to know that, like you, in the 15 months I've lived here, I have come to love this town. Having moved a lot in Barrington, we can finally, we finally found a place that I'm absolutely thrilled to call home. Having said that, however, I'm appalled at not only the sole decision-making with regard to so many thousands of dollars, but the obvious lack of forethought that went into the decision and lack of communication that went into the dissemination of that decision. The current assessment methodology is being applied disproportionately and was also applied outside of current Rhode Island law with regard to timing of valuation. But I'm not here to argue my particular case, because that's what appeals are for. I'm here to ask the council to repeal the tax assessor's decision and to abate the current assessments. My understanding is that the tax assessor reports to the town manager, who in turn reports to you. Therefore, you have the power to change this decision, to do what's fair and equitable. As I stated in the letter to the editor that I wrote, I have absolutely no problem paying my fair share of taxes to preserve, protect, and enhance our amazing town, but the application of this recent assessment decision should not stand. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Charles Payne, 45 Chapin Road. Mr. President, council members, I'd agree with everything that Beth Sblane just said, and I've also heard a lot of comments similar to hers. I know there's a lot of hard feelings in the community over this. I'm also here to talk about the tax issue, but I'm not here to fight about it. I'd really like to offer a solution. It starts with the one thing that we can all agree on, and God knows better than any of us that in government these days, we need dialogue and we need honesty. And it, it appears that there's been a lot of misinformation going around, just from reading the paper and talking to people, about exactly what the issue is. So, I'm here to propose something that I think might be, I'd like for you to consider. Call it a committee, call it a commission, whatever. What I'd like to see you do is appoint a group of people tasked with one specific function, that is to do some fact-finding for you. You can all do it yourselves, but I think if you had a group of people with representatives from the aggrieved taxpayers, representatives from the town hall, both points of view, I think you probably need a chairman that's completely, without, without any opinion on the matter, maybe even somebody from out of town, but a neutral person to, to run the committee. The committee will not be, will not exist to argue over the issues. It'll simply exist to find the facts for you. And the way they might go about that is they, they might have experts that, I think you should hear from the Director of Municipal Finance and the Department of Revenue for the state. That's your per, that's one of your experts. You could hear from the President of the Rhode Island Association of Assessors. That's somebody that knows a little bit about the issue. The, maybe the President of the Board of Realtors. And I even think it'd be useful to hear from someone like a law professor from the, from Johnson &amp; Wales, or, I mean, I'm sorry, from Roger Williams. Somebody that's kind of a neutral person that can help you understand the issues. The committee would be tasked to simply educate itself about the issue, then to hopefully reach a consensus report on just what the facts are, not offering any recommendations, not, you know, to, to try to sway your opinion. But I think if you guys, if the town as a whole had the facts, the facts would speak for themselves. I have no doubt that if we could all agree on, and stipulate to, a set of facts, you wouldn't hesitate to know what to do about it. So, thank you, and please, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have copies of my comment. If you'd allow me to, I'd like to provide--
You can give them to the clerk, and she'll, she'll give them to us, and-- Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. The next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the Barrington Census 2020 Complete Count Committee Charge. I was impressed with this, the charge, as, as it was put together. Does anyone have any comments or, or changes, or? I think it's a--
Oh, I, I did have a question. I, I thought the charge was, was comprehensive, and I agree with, with the, with it. The, the one thing that was not stated was how the members of the committee would be selected and how many would serve on the committee. And I just wondered if that had been figured out.
If I, the, the committee would be volunteers, and it would be as, as large as we could get it. I've asked President Carroll to reach out to the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee, and I think they've made a commitment to provide at least two volunteers--
Each.
And we would, yeah, two each. And we would certainly take anyone else, and Dan, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't even see you here. Please, jump in.
Just as the town manager said, it's an open-ended for as many folks who are willing to serve. It would be great to have representatives from the political parties. I think other communities that we might reach out to would be senior community as well as the school community, but there, there wouldn't necessarily, unless you so chose, but there wouldn't necessarily need to be a finite membership. And it is pretty much an open-ended volunteer kind of a thing. The main purpose, as you could see in the charge, is primarily communication and awareness.
I, my own view is that committees can get sort of unwieldy if, if they get too large. This committee isn't, isn't really gonna propose policy, so that makes it a little different. It's really trying to implement the goals that you've set out here, so that makes it a little different. More of a core than a committee. But in, in talking about the ways that you would do that, I, I can see that. I, I don't have a problem with any number that someone wants to propose.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So, this, this would not be a committee established by the council, correct? It's established by the manager?
No, this is, this is established by the council.
If, then does that oblige them to open meetings?
Yes.
And is there-- So, I'm, I'm currently serving on the Transportation Task Force for the schools, which is a committee established by the superintendent, and it makes ongoing work that you're doing much easier, because you can share emails, and this is gonna be a working group. It's not gonna be setting policy. I think if it's a committee established by the council, it might handcuff them in being able to rapidly figure out how they're gonna get out and make sure that as many Barrington residents fill this out. So, if there's a way to avoid, I, I want the committee to exist. I want it to be as effective as it can, and I think us not establishing it helps that
Mike?
So, if a committee is created by the council, it is subject to the open meetings law. If a committee is created by the town manager and doesn't have, serving on its committee a majority of any other subcommittee of the town, you're correct, it is not, it then becomes a manager's committee, advisory committee, and then he presumably would bring to you recommendations, et cetera, for your consideration at open meetings. But once you establish a committee, it's totally subject to the open meetings law.
Yeah. And I guess the one, the, the biggest sort of obstacle of the Open Meetings Act, it's wonderful, it, it provides a lot of sunshine and everyone can see what's happening, but it does sort of, the emailing is, is difficult, and so it's hard to act quickly to say, well, we forgot about this event, we wanna have a table at this event. You know, there's the Fiddlin' Folk Fest coming up. Do we have somebody who, can anyone jump in and, and go to that event and just sit there at a table and provide information? You can't do that without providing, you can't do anything by email, and you'd have to have a, an open meeting. So, that's-- I guess, I generally am against that, because when you're making policy or proposing policy, you wanna have it out in the open. This is really just implementing, trying to get a full census count, and it's--
The task force, more than the committee, really.
Yeah. How did the rest of the council--
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would make a, a motion to empower the town manager to establish-- I would make a motion to empower the town manager to establish Census, the Barrington Census 2020 Complete Count Committee under his supervision.
I don't know that we need to make a motion, and maybe we don't want it.
I would rather you not make a motion.
I would draw my motion.
Thank you. But it's okay to talk about the fact that you'd like the manager to set something up, you just don't need a motion.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to work for Dan.
And I did speak with both the chairs of the Democratic and the Republican Committee. They both committed to having two. I twisted Jeff Grove's arm today when he was getting off a plane in Albuquerque, and he said there's a lot of interest in, at the last meeting they had, so they shouldn't have a problem. I'll tell Pam that, and she'll have to get in two people based on that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support of the endeavor.
Next item is to discuss an act on short-term rentals. We're not proposing an ordinance at this time, but this is something we've talked about. The Economic Development Committee really wasn't interested in doing this because it was such a small percentage, there's such a small amount of it. I'm not sure that that's true. I think, I tend to, it could just be where I see it. There are two or three of these Airbnbs in my neighborhood are similar. And what we, what we don't want to do is to create a big administrative burden on our town administration, but there are a few things that we could do that would be relatively simple, asking people to register, they would then get some kind of document that they would have to post that would just say, these are the noise ordinances, and just to inform people who are visiting that you're in a neighborhood, and please be respectful. And you've mentioned a couple of other things. How does everybody feel about empowering the solicitor to propose an ordinance to us?
I, since I brought this issue to the council's attention, it was at least two, if not three, years ago. It was then sent to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board sort of came to the same determination as the Environmental, the...
Economic Development.
Economic Development Commission. I was disappointed then, and I think when, after it came up again, and the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns came out with a, with a whole report on it, and we again passed it to the Planning Board and the EDC. Again, I was a little disappointed that it came back, that it wasn't deemed as important, when in fact I have had constituents call me with concerns about living next door to places that were bought specifically for short-term rentals. And even if that's one Barrington resident, I think that's an important concern, and I thought the letter from the Baracos was very, was relevant. And so I am definitely in favor of the solicitor coming up with an ordinance that then can be reviewed by both the Planning Board and the EDC. I think, I think that's a, that's a good step.
I'm, I'm a bit apprehensive to the idea in general, given that the Economic Development Commission and the Planning Board both evaluated it and recommended the town not taking action. I think specifically in terms of limiting the frequency of requiring owner occupied, because it's then treating short-term rentals differently than long-term rentals, and whether we're going to classify it as a business or a residence, or whether it's commercial property or residential, there's no tax difference, and so treating it differently when, when people are still just sleeping and eating in the, in the home. And I'm fine with the solicitor doing it unless other people are similarly apprehensive. I don't know that, I'd want, I'd want the solicitor taking the time to do it if other people feel the same way as I do.
I mean, my opinion on it is, it sounds to be primarily a law enforcement problem, and if we're missing an ordinance that would otherwise govern the behavior that's bothering these neighbors, we ought to be looking at that, whether the property is owner occupied or is a short-term rental. You know, we want to make sure that people are not so upset by the neighborhood they live in, that they feel compelled to come to the government about it. I don't have a problem looking at an ordinance, but I see the recommendations that are in this memo here, and some of these things give me some pause, requirement that they be owner occupied, limit in the rental frequency, restricting the occupancy to no greater than two occupants per bedroom. And I wonder, you know, one, are we overstepping our authority legally to do that? And if we're not, isn't this a bit of the, you know, it just seems like a government overreach to some extent to legislate so closely what someone can do with a property they own? And if it's really primarily a concern about people's behavior while they're there, if we can identify the properties and ask the chief every weekend, you know, drive by, drive by at nine at night, you see something, you know, be on it like white on rice, and the owners will get the message that, you know, you're going to have to be very careful the way you operate this thing. I'd be happy to look at an ordinance, but these types of measures, I think, are overreaching.
How would you identify the property if there's no record?
I think, I wouldn't think of it much different than any owner-occupied property, which is, if there's a problem house, where we're hearing about complaints over and over again at the police department, then it wouldn't matter to me whether it's a short-term rental or an owner-occupied property. You know, there's something going on there that is making, being so disruptive to the neighborhood that the police or the town council is hearing about it, we ought to be looking at whether we're missing an ordinance that dictates, you know, how to act appropriately in your neighborhood. But the fact that it's a short-term rental by itself doesn't bother me anymore than I think if it were a long-term rental and someone had terrible tenants, and it happens. What we're looking for is, you know, behave while you're there. Don't disturb the neighbors.
I mean, I don't, I've heard some feedback on short-term rentals, and the complaint is not about people sleeping there, the complaint is about the parties, and, and the concern that this is somebody who, I have no idea who they are, and they're, you know, there's a single woman who lives on my street, and there's a house next to her, and she doesn't like the idea that not only will she never get to know some of these people, but they're rotating. So that is a concern for some people.
On the flip side, you can get neighbors you don't like, and then they're always there.
No, that's, that's very true, but in a short-term rental, you know, the people can change week to week, day to day, and I know of this particular single woman, and the house next door was leased to a high school, graduating high school class, and, you know, it was one hellish weekend, which wasn't necessarily repeated weekend after weekend after weekend, so that the police weren't really able to identify this as a, as a problem, because it, but I, I would like to at least see something put into writing that, that we can all comment on, as well as the Planning Board and the EDC.
Sure. My name is Bob Baraco, and I live at 26 Leslie, and I can see that everyone has read the letter that I wrote. I would ask you, apart from my other things that I was going to say, if any of you would like to live in a neighborhood with an Airbnb next to you? You probably wouldn't.
We do.
It's not pleasant, you never know what's going to happen. There are large groups of unrelated people, and they're having a good time, and we try to avoid being at our house if we can during the summer. It starts in May, it can go until October. If we had to do it over again, I don't know if I would buy the house. So that would be what I would like to have you think about. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Well, I don't think we need to, we certainly don't need to make any decision other than whether we're going to continue to look into this. So I will make a motion that the town solicitor provide us with a proposed ordinance on this I think, you know, we can, we can work on it. I don't want to get too into the weeds, but...
I can provide a fairly simple baseline. We don't need anything near the extent of what Narragansett and Newport has, because it's, you know, by multiple is a huge problem in those communities.
Yes, this isn't a revenue issue, although that's...
No, it's not a revenue issue, it's, it's just so that you have the ability, if you desire, to, to regulate if need be. So I'll come up with something, and then I agree with Kate, maybe share it with those other two boards, Planning, Economic Development, so they can have some input before it finally gets back to you, maybe by November, December.
So I've made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
Okay, with one abstention. Next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on the complete streets policy. And we have our town planner to talk about that.
So this policy was developed by the Planning Board, recommended by the Planning Board as part of implementation of the comprehensive plan, which focuses on improving pedestrian access and bike acts, bike facilities throughout our street, throughout certain streets in town. Not every street should have a sidewalk, and not every street should have a bike lane or something like that, but where it makes sense. This is done extensively in Massachusetts, and it's also a growing trend in Rhode Island. The, the Planning Board's recommendation included referring a lot of these projects to the TRC, but internally, we looked at it, and we thought that was going to be too much of kind of an extra step and a lot of wasted time, whereas this policy recommends a more of an administrative application of this policy, with the option of referring it to the TRC. The other assumption would be that, this is later in the agenda, that we would have a complete streets plan that we could base decisions on, whether to include, say, a crosswalk here, or a reconstruction of a sidewalk, say, on Maple Avenue, near Middle Highway, I can imagine that being part of one of these projects, or handicap ramps, or, you know, certain design elements. So that is the intent of the policy, and that's attached to the memo. And so, do you have any questions?
I do. One of the, one of the provisions of the policy would be that it wouldn't apply where it was economically, economically didn't make sense if it got too expensive, and if, you know, not every, as you said, not every street should have sidewalks. The question is, who determines when it applies and when it doesn't apply?
One of the goals would be to establish this plan, which any project would be, you know, looked at in context of this plan itself, which provides general objectives for certain types of streets. So, and then administratively, we would consider the cost based on the, especially the Public Works Director. What are these cost considerations? Is it connect, is it a really vital piece that's, really needs to be put in no matter what, or is it something that's kind of like a nice thing to have, but it's so expensive that, you know, is there right-of-way involved, do you have to quiet right-of-way? It's, you know, it's a drainage issue you have to deal with if you put the sidewalk in or something like that? So that, that would be the kind of internal discussions that would need to take place.
But I guess I'm just wondering ultimately, is it, you're, you're talking about an administrative enacted, so it would be, I guess, the town manager as the final say as to whether it applies, or with the...
That was, that was the structure.
Okay.
Both Alan Qua, Alan Qua, Phil and myself met to talk about this, and our concern was getting locked into a policy that was unaffordable and was impractical in certain locations. So that's why we asked for this flexibility. It's a great aspirational goal, and will make a lot of sense in a lot of places, but there are some places where we'd be doing some work, and we didn't want to get handcuffed into having to comply with a policy that just isn't practical.
Does anyone have any questions?
Make a motion to accept the complete streets policy as proposed, and direct the Technical Review Committee to incorporate the policy where economically practical.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Phil. The next item is to discuss an act on resolutions. This is a resolution relative to public access to the shoreline. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or ideas about this?
I had a lot of concerns about this. The goal of it, I think, is admirable, which is ensure Rhode Islanders' access to the shoreline, and it matters in Barrington probably as much if not more than most towns. But I was concerned about it for, for a couple of reasons. The first being that we've kind of gotten burned before by a resolution that was sort of passed our way by another town, turned out not to be entirely correct, kind of out of context, and I really regret that. The second thing is that what this resolution does is it calls for the General Assembly to take action to enforce the Constitution, which really doesn't make a lot of sense. The Constitution is enforceable by the people in court, and between things I've seen that the Assembly has done around access to the shoreline, including saltwater fishing licenses, where Rhode Islanders, for the first time, now have to go register to fish in saltwater, or, for example, when they decided to charge an admission fee at Colt State Park for a mile, and they decided that was a bad idea. I'm just not sure that sending this matter, you know, saying, we want the legislature to figure this out, is, is a great idea. I think clearly there needs to be, you know, in Charlestown, from what I hear, some serious action taken regarding what private property owners are doing and think they can do with Rhode Island shoreline, but I don't think the legislative action is really the fix to it. We saw that most recently with the polystyrene, or the plastic bag ban, right, where we think it's a great thing that this is going to be a statewide policy, and it's a Trojan horse. So I think the Constitution says it clearly enough, and better to leave well enough alone than to legislate around it.
Does anyone want to make a motion to adopt this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This is to discuss an act on bids. The Planning Board is asking for a complete street study to VHB for not to exceed $20,000.
This is to implement the complete streets policy. It's about five minutes old.
Already asking for money.
The, the goal would be to create a plan, so it's not some kind of arbitrary, do the sidewalk here, strip, strip the crosswalk here, and this would be a more of a comprehensive assessment of the town's infrastructure, and coming up with more of a guide, guidance for... for application of the complete streets policy. The City of Providence actually completed something very similar, obviously a much more, I'm sure, elaborate plan, but they, they have recognized the fact they need something in writing to be able to apply the, any kind of complete streets policy or ordinance.
Okay.
So the, this is a bid from one of our on-call engineers. They're well-known for infrastructure planning, VHB, not, and the amount would be to not to exceed $20,000, which is the amount in the capital budget for comprehensive plan
I'll make a motion to award the bid for a complete street study to Benass, Hangan, Ruslin, VHB incorporation of Providence at a cost not to exceed $20,000.
Second.
You're going to second?
Yeah.
Okay, so further discussion?
Thank you, Chair. Phil, would this assessment include identifying possible funding sources?
We can, we can make sure they have that discussion as part of the deliverable in the plan.
I'd like to see that included. Thank you. Thank you, President.
Nice addition.
I had a question, whether they were going to engage with any townspeople committees, et cetera, about where they thought implementing this policy would make the most sense. I see that they're, they're doing an assessment that's underway now, but where are the inputs coming for that?
They're revising their scope, and I did ask for participation with the planning board.
Okay.
I'm involved in a walk audit that's going to be happening in a couple of weeks. Volunteers getting together to walk through town. Hope we could send the, the report that comes from that along to you for incorporation.
How are the roads selected? I just noticed that Councilman Breyer's Eastern Barrington is underrepresented with only Massasoit and Sohams. How were they selected, these roads?
Well, first of all, if it's a state road, that's a state construction project. But it doesn't mean you don't have, you know, take into account the fact that you need to make some kind of connection, extended sidewalks, have the state extended sidewalk, maybe a block or something like that, that could be part of the plan. But the different objectives for different types of streets, like Bay Spring Avenue, it's going to have a different objective, and I think you're going to rule out a lot of these neighborhood streets, you're not going to be building a sidewalk on, you know, like, I don't know, Anthony Road or something like that. So if it's a major, major town road, you're going to look at doing a little bit more, especially if it's also including addressing some kind of concern about access to a school or a park or the town, the, the commercial area.
If that's the case, why is New Meadow not included?
That's, that's a state road.
And Sohams is not?
Sohams is a state road.
Well, Sohams is included.
This is just, it looks like it's preliminary concept, so I, I took from it that it was sort of a sampling to kind of get a sense of creating a larger overall strategy. Is that the right way to look at this?
Yeah, the, especially with the, the part where we do the initial assessment, that includes a broader look of what street types are and various goals, and then these, the listing of streets, which they're changing to make them more local, local focused, would be to drill down on specific recommendations.
I only bring that up because there were the, the residents on the far end of New Meadow who have no sidewalks at all, and they aren't within the area that can transport. They can't go by bus to, I guess it was Hampton Meadows. And they were put on the, the tip or the top or whatever list to...
Right. That was in the comprehensive plan, the general goal for that area.
But I would think that if the complete streets included that as a recommendation, that it would give them a little more clout, or maybe move it up in the tip line for sidewalks.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is to award a bid for a consultant for resiliency planner, Kim Jacobs, not to exceed $25,000. She's, Ms. Jacobs has already started on doing this really as part of the, what's the program that she's been working on?
Community rating.
The community rating system, which is, just involves a lot of different work, and so she did some resiliency work last summer that was very successful, including outreach. So she was also the only person who applied for the position, but she's perfect for it, in my opinion. So does anyone have any questions or concerns about it? Then I will make a motion to award a bid for a consultant for resiliency planner, Kim Jacobs, not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The next one is to award a bid from, it looks like our town planner is asking for a lot of money this month. Award a bid for Latham Park Phase Two improvements to Skirka Construction of West Warwick. And this is for a lot of different items to really work on Latham Park.
But that last motion, is there, is it possible to include, I think it's required based on the amount, $10,000 from the climate mitigation projects capital reserve account?
I didn't, I didn't look at the pre-printed...
I can't remember what the threshold is.
Are you saying for the equipment, or for, or the prior one? The, the last bid in the list?
Actually, say anything last one in the draft. So you're, you're saying you want authorization to pay for this out of the...
10,000 out of the 25.
Out of the, which, which account?
The climate mitigation projects capital reserve account.
Okay. Do we need to authorize that? Mike?
To get a...
Or can the manager do that without us?
He had a threshold of reserve accounts that had to get approved by the council.
I recall that, yeah. I'll make a motion to...
It's better to make the motion.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to fund 10,000 out of the $25,000 contract for the resiliency planner from the climate mitigation projects capital reserve account.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so the next one is Latham Park. Give us a thumbnail sketch of what that's about.
This is the, we did some improvements there. A lot of it was grant-funded about five years ago, focusing along the waterfront. We refixed the revetment along there. All that erosion was really eating away at the shoreline, and there's really uneven, it's really almost impossible to walk along the shore and enjoy that. So we updated that whole area, included new benches and a pathway, redid the parking lot, added some stormwater facilities. And so that fixed that area. Now we're moving toward Shore Drive, so this would be the improvement of the driveway from Shore Drive up to the point where that, we redid that parking lot, where the loop is. And it would include additional parking, about 14 parking spaces on the south side of the driveway as you come in. And with the increased utilization, especially with the concerts, I think that would, that would really help. Hopefully, there's more use with these improvements as well, because one of the elements is a new playground, is, that's the second part of the request. So a lot of the site work would, there's a lot of site work involved, including a new pathway along this area, around a new expanded playground. They're prepping the playground, they're demoing the existing playground and the basketball court. This has been, works for a couple of years now in planning, so, and we're relocating in the volleyball court with new sand, more closer to Shore Drive to provide room for the expanded playground area. And the area, the grass area around that area is going to be regraded and seeded, so it's going to be a better surface around where the concerts are held. So that's the gist of the, of the site work. That Skirka Construction of West Warwick bid on, they're the low bidder after negotiating with the three lowest bidders, and their bid came, comes to 245, 200, including a, an additional 10% contingency would be the request. A lot of the funding would be coming from DEM grant. 90,000 would be coming from the road and drainage bond for all that pavement work, and about $25,000 would help with the contingency from the Parks and Trails CR account.
If necessary.
If necessary.
Right.
So I guess that would be another part of the motion, would be the CR account authorization.
Okay.
I have, I have one, it's, it's minor, but in the text on page three, it said, "Skirka remains the low bidder after factoring in the seven deducts." The pay, you've asked, or some, you've asked for the rejection of deduct seven, which was $2,000. In addition, rejecting deduct five is $1,000, was also recommended, but if you add two and one, 1,000, you get three, which for me meant that the revised bid was 246.
That's right. I missed $1,000 from deduct five. Thank you.
So we would have to change that amount?
246.
And then would that require an extra $1,000 from the Parks and Trails?
CR account.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to award the contract for the Latham Park Two renovations to Skirka Construction of West Warwick, Rhode Island, in an amount not to exceed $246,200, to include an additional 10% contingency, and to authorize the use of $25,620 from the Parks and Trails CR account?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes. What do you do with that?
I've, I've, what? I've looked at the, there's a playground in Providence, that's Compan Playground, and that is extremely, all these spinners are really popular. You put, you sit in it and you spin.
Does somebody spin it for you?
It's, I think it's low enough to spin with your foot.
Or be spun.
How do you...
Like we can do in these chairs.
Yeah.
They're larger than pictured.
And this, this looks like a torture device. Does that spin as well?
That's even better.
Yeah, I think so.
Lay down on that one.
Was it called? Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Your grandkid's going to grow up, he's going to be happy those are there.
I did have a question about some of the deducts. It was sad to see that the boulders got cut. Is there any way to accommodate those in the future?
We can use some of the contingency toward the end to bring, bring some boulders in if we, if we have the funding available. We can, I think that's something easily added back in, because you do that at the end anyway.
As long as you don't take up the space with something else, you can always...
Yeah, we could carefully place them.
And what were the boulders for? For just climbing?
Yeah, it just occurred to me, I was stuck in traffic in Belmont, Mass., and it was at the stoplight, and they were redoing a park there. And it was a playground, almost the entire thing was boulders. It was really cool. And so when I saw that those were cut, I was like, "Yeah, that's too bad." But you got to pay for this somehow, so.
DPW actually might have some boulders lying around.
Fell off a truck?
They brought a boulder to the, the Barrington Community Garden, and it's great. It just sort of establishes where the entrance is. I bet you can find some boulders.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And the next item on the agenda is still with the planning board, to award a bid for new playground equipment at Latham Park to Compan Playground in an amount not to exceed And this is those funny things along with swings and...
The parkour, obstacle course, slides, the spinners, balance beams, swings. I think that's about it.
Sounds great.
You have pictures of each, of each one. And these are not painted. It's very hard, hard wood that holds up really well in this environment, and so you don't have that chipping paint either from, that you see now in that, in that kind of tough environment.
Right. In the past, it's been like a pressure-treated wood, which, you know, we used to look at and wonder if somebody can get arsenic splinters.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't pressure-treated, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the Latham Park Playground to Compan Playground Solutions Incorporated of Austin, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $109,146.12.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
We have to authorize the money from the capital account as well. So I'll make a motion to fund the contract for acquisition of playground equipment from Compan Playground Solutions, Inc. of Austin, with $30,946.12 from the Parks and Trails capital reserve account. Is that the right one, Phil?
Yes, that's right.
These are made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to discuss an act on ordinances. The first one is introduction of an ordinance, an amendment, the chapter 63 alcoholic beverages. This is just an introduction, but this is one, we talked about, I wanted to, before, I guess before the next meeting, we could look into the insurance issue on this.
I did look into the insurance issue, and if it's catered, they'll have to have coverage. If it's a private event, and they're going to run it privately, which would be of some concern, but there's a tulip, it's called, and I'll have to find my paperwork here, but it's, it's provided by the trust, and I'm trying to remember what tulip stands for.
Right, but it, it's a one-time...
Right.
Insurance policy for, it covers one event.
Okay. Do I hear a motion...
Primary liability insurance protection?
Yeah, it's called tenant users liability insurance policy. So it's for a one-time event, and then any kind of vendors or caterers would obviously have their own insurance coverage.
Good. Do I hear a motion to introduce 2019-23 an ordinance amendment to chapter 63 alcoholic beverages and schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 7, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is, is the public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing into an ordinance amendment to chapter 185 zoning to establish the agricultural rural zoning. I passed along a, an email that I got, I think you all saw that. The proposal was to expand it beyond the 120,000 square feet.
Five acres?
To five acres.
Which is about 175,000. I did the math, because I wasn't sure what kind of a size difference we were talking about.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I guess if the, if the goal is to somehow prevent something like happened with Mr. Chauffe, that won't do it. Because essentially, if a for-profit developer wants to come in and build 25 units and put in five of them, or I guess it would have to be six or something, as affordables and the rest... the rest is for-profit, cutting through everything in between, they could just ignore our zoning. So, the fact that it's three acre, or five acre, or 10 acre zoning wouldn't make a difference. They could still do that. In, in the case Mr. Chofay went through, it was one acre zoning, and he was talking about essentially on, really on four buildable acres, I think he was talking about putting 24 units. So, if that's the goal, I, I don't have a problem with increasing the size of it, but it's, we would need to find some other way, and I think we'd have to do it through some kind of deed restriction to ensure that that was continued as either, you know, agricultural going forward before we sold it. But does anyone have any comments on the, the proposed?
I'm curious relating to the land, where, where we stand with what we've been researching as possible options for the land.
You're talking about Lot 3A?
Yes.
Yeah, Phil is still looking at grants, and we're going to, we promised a public forum at the Financial Town Meeting, which we hope to have in the next month or two, where we would discuss those options. But Phil's trying to gather the data as to what grants are available, what, what the, how much they'll pay. Farm land, you can get a lot more payment than you can on open space. And then, we'd have to make a determination as to whether we wanted to, which option to take as far as utilization goes.
Just wanted to kind of describe the zoning proposal.
Sure.
So, the new zone, which is currently written, would increase the minimum lot size basically from 40,000 square feet to 120,000 square feet. This is recommended by the planning board. They spent, they started talking about it in 2016 with the Zoning Update Committee. Then, there's a lot of turnover on the planning board, kind of got put on hold, came back up last year, and this is their recommendation that they've come, that they recommend adopting. The agricultural rural zone does, dimensional regulations would not change like anything but the minimum lot size, so everything else would stay in place, not creating any new non-conformities by setback or frontage or something like that. The other, there are also some cleanup items that, that are recommended, including adding a residence business flex label to the use table by just adding it to the neighborhood business column. That was an oversight when that RBF district was established. There are a number of new, with the AR zone, there would be amendment to the use table allowing, identifying what uses are by special, what are permitted, by special use, what are not permitted. And also, the other kind of cleanup item was to revise the minimum width side yards throughout the town for every zone by eliminating the requirement, basing the minimum side yard on 10% of the lot frontage. So, if you have a lot of lot frontage, your, your side yard setback expands to that, like a 300-foot frontage, your, your side yard setback's 300, it's 30 feet, no matter what zone you're in. So, that's an example. So, that's, that, this will make it more consistent, side yard setback application. Another thing would be to amend accessory uses and structures in residence districts to include dimensional regulations for barn structures in the AR zone. But as far as the map itself, the whole AR zone would be applied to the existing R40 Conservation Development District in the, in the George Street area, except for the town-owned cemetery property 30, Lot 37-061. That would be open space passive, which is consistent with other cemetery properties. And the other question, which I've flagged, is whether you want to leave the zoning in place for Lot 3A of all places, because the town owns that property. And when you apply for grants, the after value, the before value is important, so this change would, would, could affect the appraisal of that property, because we have a current appraisal based on the existing zone.
Okay, so for purposes of grant, if we, if we, just for purposes of grant, it would make sense to leave the zoning as is?
Right, and maybe the AR zone is not something the town wants in the long term, as, you know, have these public forums, you might want to come up with some other zone for that property. Maybe it's the Wildlife Resources District, which is right next to it. You know, it could be some other zone.
Yes, that was something I was wondering if, if we're going to be, we're still in the process of researching what our options are, and we plan to have a forum, if voting to change, if changing the, the zoning before we're done with that research and discussion makes sense, or if, not that I'm against it, but if waiting until after, either we confirm that that's exactly what we want to do, or we evaluate other opportunities as they come.
So, but we could do.
We could.
Address the rest of it and leave 3A as.
R40 CD, which also means you have to keep that R40 CD in the zoning ordinance. So, just add the AR. You just have to do some juggling around to make it work. Keep that, because otherwise, R40 CD doesn't exist based on this amendment.
Yeah, and that's going to complicate things. You could just adopt it all as is, and then go back and do a small amendment later. Rather, if we have to start carving out, it's going to take a little bit of work. The other thing is, you mentioned at the beginning, Mike, that some, there's a letter who's asking for five acre zoning. You know, the planning board recommendation is basically three acre zoning, 120,000 square feet. That's something you need to consider, too.
Would it make sense to ask for sort of a red line of this and do it at the next meeting? Because I think Jacob makes a good point, which is, why don't we do it all at once? And I think it's, it's not an ideal time to sit around carving up the language of zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And hope we got it right.
Is there any, is there any urgency to this? I'm going to keep the public hearing open if, if you'd like to speak on this, but is there any urgency to this, Phil?
I don't think so, not currently. There's nothing pending, there's nothing out there right now, so.
Okay, okay. So, is, this gentleman wanted to be heard in, on this, it is a public hearing, so please.
My name is Robert Doherty. I live at 10 George Street, and I'm the owner of Lot 42. I'd like to make a general comment in that it might be helpful that if the town is considering an ordinance that's going to affect a very small portion of the town, to get a feeling from the people that live there, how they would feel about those proposed changes. Ordinances tend to steamroll along, and when they get to this point, if there's public opposition, sometimes it really isn't thoroughly considered. So, that would be a suggestion, you know, of a general nature. When I received the notice in the mail of the proposed zoning change, my initial reaction was that this is a solution for no problem. I mean, I failed to see what the problem is. I asked several of my neighbors, and they all had different views as to what the problem might be and how it should be solved. Now, I only see one neighbor here tonight, but a lot of them didn't like the idea of, you know, being forced into what in effect is a non-conforming lot. There's very few lots that are more than 120,000, 120,000 square feet. That's almost three acres. For instance, if you look at the map, Lot 59, back in 1986, Fort Town Farm, which owns that lot, gave up their development rights for that, in turn, for a 20-year free lease for approximately 25 acres in this shaded area that's in the interior portion. That's what they farm. There's a long dirt road that goes down to two lots at the water's edge. My calculation was that that was somewhere between a $1 million and $2 million stipend to Fort Town Farm. I figure that a fair rental value per year of all that land is not what you're getting now. You're getting $10,000 a year now. I think it should be more, like 50,000 or 100,000. Fort Town Farm is extremely profitable. Jack Clegg, who's passed on, and I were pretty good friends, he indicated to me that they had, and this was 12, 15 years ago, that they had passed the $1 million mark, where they would clear after all their expenses, a million dollars. Now, a good part of that is because there's a lot of interest in farm fresh food today. They have a nice location, they're adjacent, a very wealthy town, and a town which, in my opinion at least, is giving them a huge financial benefit.
In terms of the, the zoning change.
I have a hearing problem if.
Sure. In terms of the zoning change, that issue, if I'm reading the council right.
Yes, I'm opposed to the zoning change, because I think it tends to devalue the properties
Right.
In the area.
I, I, you're welcome to talk about that tonight, but I think we're probably going to hear that again. I don't think we're going to make a decision on that, so.
Now, if you could help me in the understanding of what the original intent of the zoning proposal was, you know, it's, it's hard to.
My sense from the planning board is that it was to preserve the rural character of that area, and not to have dense development.
Is, is the proposal going to change the pending situation with the owners of Lot 3A?
Well, we, the town of Barrington is now the owners of Lot 3A. We negotiated.
Negotiated something with them?
We negotiated a purchase with the owner because that, we couldn't resolve that any other way.
Now, the following remarks I have point to what I think are some inaccuracies in the map. If you look at the gray area in the lower left corner, adjacent lots 42 and 46, that gives one the impression that that is town land because it's shaded. Those two lots actually go to the water. I bought the, the property in 1986, and at that time, the maps and everything showed that the pieces of property went right, right to the water. And this map kind of gives you the impression that the town owns a portion of that between the water and the property lives. So, that should be corrected. The other thing is, there's a little parcel configured number one. That is the stub end of a right-of-way that goes from George Street down to my property. It, it's 18 feet wide and perhaps 50 feet long. I never knew that existed as a separate parcel. The other thing of a general nature, not to be confused with the zoning change, is the dirt road that goes from George Street down to lots 46 and 42. Now, up until about five years ago, I maintained that by myself at my cost. And I, I think it would be fair, seeing it's a public road, that the town maintains it. They sort of maintain it. But occasionally, when they make efforts to put gravel down and spread it around, the environmental people that manage the property indicate to them that it's a private road, and that they shouldn't assist the people that own that private road, i.e., me and the Walches.
Right.
But it is a public road.
So, I think what I'm going to do is ask that we continue this hearing. That means we're going to have it on another date, to give everybody an opportunity, and including your neighbors, and if you want to encourage your neighbors to come.
But I am correct in assuming that all of these lots, or most of them, would become non-conforming, right?
Well, I don't know about all of them. Those that are under, it depends on whether we go to the three acres as proposed, or the 120,000 square feet. There are a number of acres, there are a number of lots that are above that size.
Right. Would it also mean that we could grow our own crops and have a small standout on George Street with an honesty box for cash deposits?
Absolutely.
You're all for farm fresh food, huh?
Yes, yes. So, I'm trying to get a sense of when. Should we do this at the next meeting, or should we put it on for two meetings?
How long do you think we'll know with this study? I mean, will we be ready to go forward in three weeks, or are we looking at the November meeting? Because the next meeting, you're right, is in October 4th, it's like three weeks from now.
Could I have your name, so we can check some documents?
Sure. I'm sorry, what's the question about how long before what's ready?
So, so, we're trying to figure out whether or not we can redline this ordinance and come back with something for the council to consider in three weeks. The question is, we're going to have to continue this, and I want to continue it to a date certain, so we don't have to re-advertise.
And if we, I guess one of the issues is trying to get community participation. I mean, part of this was grants. We talked about not wanting to change the zoning because the grants would be higher, and then we could change the zoning after. When, I mean, what does that mean in terms of when we could actually change?
I don't know if that's going to be resolved by the time, anytime soon. It's, it's a very.
Mr. President, I, I think that we probably need to do this as a package deal, and that we ought to have our community forum about Lot 3A, and know where we're headed with that direction, and then we can bring this back in. So, I would say continue it to November, because it isn't going to be done by October, and perhaps even push it to December. But at least at this point, October, I don't think is reasonable. And I don't think there's any, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any pressure to get this thing done quickly, is there?
No, no.
I'd rather do it right.
Yeah, so, why don't we continue it to December to give time for?
I'm sorry, that would be December 2nd, you need to make that part of the motion.
Right. So, I will make a motion to, I will close the public hearing.
No, no, please keep it open.
I will keep the public hearing open, but continue this matter, make a motion to continue this matter to December 2nd. Do we need to advertise that, or just post it?
We'll just, we'll just post it, because anyone who is here this evening knows it's being continued.
Yes, so if anyone wants to be heard on this, the next time this will be up is December 2nd. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
You, you don't want to hear from the other people who are here.
Well, I, I thought, when we, when we have this more fully, when we're sort of more fully developed, because we could be debating over things that change anyway.
Okay, I'm just thinking that there are people who have sat through this meeting, and they might want to just render an opinion or something.
If anyone else wants to be heard. If anyone else wants to be heard on this? No one? Okay. Come forward, please.
Good evening. Martha Brooks, 100 George Street. I, as the owner of a potentially non-conforming lot, would like to have it clearly explained what the need for the change is and what the change means to us, what would be the benefit to making this change to the residents and to the town. It's not quite clear to me.
Yeah. So the genesis of this was probably the Mr. Choufe's purchase and his attempt to put 24 units on a very small area. The character of that area is not designed for dense. I mean, I'm sure you'll agree, it's not designed for dense.
I live there.
And so the genesis of this is to ensure that the area is kept as rural and agricultural as it is now, rather than trying to change it into something else. In terms of what it would mean for a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, I don't, I mean, it doesn't mean that you have a lot that's pre-existing. It's, I think the term be grandfathered in.
In essence, Joe, I would be grandfathered in. You'd be able to sell it. Where it would make a difference if someone wanted to come in and, after you or you yourself wanted to make changes, additions, increase the footprint, then it might require approval from the zoning board for a variance, given that it is a non-conforming lot at that point. But in terms of, you would continue to use your lot just the way you do today, and you could sell it exactly the way it is. It really just as if you wanted to make changes in the future.
So if they wanted to put an addition on, or a garage, or something, they would be able to do it as a right?
It might trigger, it might trigger some of the need. Is it, and you know, Phil, is it 50, for a non-conforming lot that requests a variance, do you remember what the percentage change is? In terms of if you have a non-conforming lot of record and you have a building on it, and you want to make a change to, let's say, add an addition or something, at some point with a non-conforming lot, it's going to require zoning relief if you make changes to it. I can look that up and have that answer at the next council meeting in terms of what the rules are on expanding in a non-conforming lot of record.
Okay. I think that's an important question. So we'll address that at the December 2 meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
You know, I think that it probably should be explained to each lot owner up there so that, so that somebody knows before that December 1 meeting how it might affect his or her lot. I mean, if it's non-conforming, then that person should know. And then also have an idea of benefits to the town so that they could see it, they could see it both ways. That's just a suggestion, but I think it would be helpful if people knew that before the December 1 meeting, rather than coming and being surprised, oh, that means this for me.
Sure. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Sure. Did you want to be heard? I'm sorry, you have to talk into the microphone because we keep a record of this.
Since I moved here-- And of course, the reason I moved there was because of its rural, you know, feeling. And I think everyone that lives there has the same outlook. But when I first moved there, it was 25,000, and then it was up to 50,000, and now we're talking 120,000. And, you know, there's a lot of things other than putting in a bigger garage or repairing a septic system. But all of those things would involve more complications if this goes through to 120.
Thank you. So do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing until December 2nd?
Made and seconded.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for ordinance amendment to Chapter 185 zoning, 185-49 written requirements. Mike, this is to bring us in--
Conformity to state law, actually, basically now, it no longer requires certified mail. It's just regular first-class mail. We can still do it either way, but it's really a housekeeping ordinance, and I'd recommend adoption.
Opening the public hearing for anyone who wants to be heard. Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-18, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 185 zoning, Section 185-49 written requirements as presented.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Sorry to slow it down. I'm trying to click through to the ordinance, but for some reason I can't get it.
So basically, what it does is it states that--
No, I've got it now. I remember what it was. It is that the notices will go to the last known address of the owners as shown on the real estate assessment. I was only going to add in there that it should go to the address of the property as well.
So it would go, in some cases, to two places.
Right.
Most cases, it would be the same.
Right.
But in those cases where somebody--
So Steve, what do you, in addition to the real estate tax assessment address, what address do you want to add?
The address of the property that's within the 200 feet. So they're not going to be the same necessarily if the property's owned by a business, if the property's owned and rented.
Like if the business has a P.O. box address, then it would go to the P.O. box and the address of the property.
Oh, yeah. We should have that information, right? Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem. Okay. I just wanted to be sure, here's the real estate tax assessment records. We know exactly what address to go to.
Right. But we know who's within 200 feet because we know which properties we're looking at. So we know that address. So I would insert that by registering to the last, I would say, after first-class mail, I would say to the property address and--
Could you point that out for Mary so that she knows?
Yeah, so it's in subsection B. Fourth line down, first-class mail. Insert there, to the property address and, before the word "to."
Did you get that? Or no? Not yet?
I have it. I can share it with Mary a little later.
Okay. Will you accept that amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion as amended, will you second it?
Second.
Okay. Made and seconded, as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is the public hearing on ordinance amendment to Chapter 134 Parks and Recreation. This is Article 8, Barrington Beach. This is, this change, I believe the only change that this is, is it will allow municipal employees who are not residents of the town to get a season pass, to pay for a season pass, parking pass at the beach. Is that right?
Correct. I proposed this, and I sent an email out to all the council members because I was trying to enact it for this year, and kind of did so based on the email responses that I did receive. But obviously, we want to make it official. And I think it's, we were asked by an employee if that might be possible. I think it's a great benefit to support our employees, and it has absolutely no impact. This year, we sold six beach passes. We've never had a parking issue at the beach since its expansion. We've used the overflow lot on occasion. We don't allow out-of-town residents without stickers to come to the beach once the parking lot is full. And if you're down there, you'll see cars coming and going, so there's always spots opening up, but they can't park on the grass. So it has no impact, with the exception of allowing our out-of-town employees to utilize one of our town's assets.
And they have to pay for it.
And they pay for it. Exactly.
I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-19, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 134 Park and Recreation, Article 8, Barrington Beach, as presented.
Second.
Okay. This has been made and seconded. Further discussion?
I have a bit of a problem with us designating out-of-town people as residents. It could wind its way into all sorts of spots in which they've gotten this beach sticker. I just, I know it, you know, doesn't have a dollar impact. I think it, with me, it has a perception impact. I, you know, I think we're generous with our employees, and I just think that this is kind of a, something that just doesn't need to happen. And, you know, I'm probably not with the rest of the committee on this. I just think it redefines being a citizen in Barrington. So that is my concern.
Okay. Anyone else? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
One opposition, the motion carries. Next item is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 161 Solid Waste, Polystyrene Food Service and Packing Materials. I'm opening the public hearing. Anyone from the public want to be heard on this? Seeing no one, what is the, does anyone have any questions or concerns about this change? Do you want to make the motion?
I certainly do. Where is it? I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-20, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 161 Solid Waste, Article 4, Polystyrene Food Service and Packing Materials, as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make one comment, that when this passes, it may be actually a landmark ordinance, because Clint Richmond had not, up to this point, seen it as strong a ban as he has seen in the past. So I'm really very pleased with this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 2019-21, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 144 Public Land's Use of, and this is for town hall hours. I'm opening the public hearing. Does anyone from the public want to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And the council want to be heard on this?
I just, I just want to say for the campout, I was on people to get your checks in, get your checks in for the campout, and three people emailed me on a Friday afternoon. All three of them said, I forgot it closed at noon, which I was impressed that they knew initially and then forgot. Not a single person was upset by it. And I know I personally have benefited from being able to go downstairs and do town hall business before a meeting or anything like that. So I think it's a really good change.
This was an experiment, as you know, with the sunset clause, and we have gotten very positive feedback from the residents that have used it. Cumulative total in the last six months is 563 people have come in after the normal 4:30 close, so almost 100 a month. We average on any given Monday night 23 and 1/2 people coming in to do business. There was some concern that marriage licenses on a Friday afternoon and that type of thing. There's been no issues with that whatsoever. I think it's a great thing. The employees certainly, it's a long day on Monday, but it makes the rest of the week go a lot quicker. And I think it's, most importantly, it's doing a great service for the citizens.
How do you count a half a person?
Half a person? Or half a day? Well, if I take Monday off, it's a day and a half of vacation time because it's a day and a half of work.
Right. That's right. But it just took the average.
Oh, oh, half a person. Actually, it's 0.45 of a person, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Does someone want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-22, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 144 Public Land's Use Town Hall Hours, as presented.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And the next one is 2019-22, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 124 Licenses and Permits, Article 7 Mobile Food Establishments. This is to implement a state statute, which does give us a certain amount of discretion on setting fees within a range. I'm opening that public hearing. Does anyone want to be heard on this? Seeing none?
I just, I just have one thing. There's, and you can leave it blank, but in Section 124-51, the state does allow you to restrict the number of permits. Now, many towns have not. If you wanted to say 5, 6, 10, 12, you could. Now is the time. You'd have to insert that number. Otherwise, it simply stays open. There's no maximum number of food trucks, whether they're selling hamburgers or ice cream. I just want to let you know you have the ability to say, once we hit 6, we stop.
That was my, that was my question, that that blank looks, sort of beams a red flag to me, and I'm not sure why, but is there a recommendation or?
My thinking was that we should, we should scrap that limitation.
Yeah.
Because these are, these are food trucks that could be coming from all over the state, right? And if we say 12, we've picked the 12 food trucks. Now, first of all, we have to say, we don't want, you know, two Korean barbecue food trucks because we only have 12, you know? Then we're picking one business over the other.
Right, right.
We don't, we don't have a problem with the number of food trucks coming into town. We could always go back later and limit it if it became out of control, but I just don't, I think Dell's Lemonade fits under this, Palagi's Ice Cream fits under this. Trying to get a number that is reasonable, I think if we find that we're getting, you know, the streets aligned with food trucks, which isn't going to happen, then we probably have to look at it. So my recommendation is to leave it open until we can sort this thing out and see if it is even an issue. But I would be, I would be recalcitrant to set a number that might be too low and causes a problem down the road.
So if we just leave it blank, then that'll be unlimited essentially?
It's unlimited, yes.
I do have one other recommendation. If you go to the last page, it talks about the police chief and his or her designee or the director of public works. That kind of goes back to, Mary, what ordinance is it, what section?
Hockers and peddlers.
Yeah, so, and this isn't really hockers and peddlers. My recommendation is that the licensing control be in the town clerk's office. They're going to be sanctioned by the state, so it's just a matter of collecting the fees and making sure that they have their license in place. I don't see the police chief, and certainly, I hope not public works, having any involvement with food trucks.
They're getting some meat or being critics.
Yeah, that's true.
I had a couple comments, or possible changes, and one relates to that. So one-- So one was relating to the fee, but we can come to that. The other was where, I guess, DPW and police would come into play, is the section right before that, Temporary Mass Gathering Permit, doesn't seem to relate to food trucks. I didn't, unless I missed it. It's talking about a gathering of a lot of people on private property. So I was wondering why it was in here.
A lot of time, the reason the state included this, Jacob, is because a lot of time at these big gatherings, whether it's a feast, or you pick and choose a church event, or whatever, there are usually food trucks at those events. And that's why the state is giving us the ability to charge a different fee if it's a really big event, from 75 to 300, and to, to make sure they comply with the fire codes, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's why that's in there.
But it, but what if there were no food trucks? I mean, according to this, if there were no food trucks at such an event, it would still apply? And so I just didn't see why this section is in here.
Yeah, as I said, it's just the model ordinance that came from the state, and it gives you the authority to, to have a little more regulation with the bigger events. And again, you're totally right. You could have one of these big events with no food trucks. I suppose some would just cater it.
Rhode Island Country Club has big events all the time. Do they, do they get a permit from the town? When?
Well, if it's private, no. If they're going to open it up to the public, that's when this would apply.
Yeah, and so, and this is, this is what the state has proposed. So this is the language from the state. I don't know, certain things, we're limited in what we can do. But if you look at the last, the second-to-last sentence, "This term shall include but not be limited to special events" as defined in Food Code Regulations. So it's sort of inartfully drafted by the state, but I want to make sure that our solicitor doesn't get the blame for that. But it, it's really intended, if you look up at the prior one, where they talk about one or more mobile food establishments adding, gathering proposed. So that's what they're intending. Can we just go back to the question of, just so that we can make sure we cover this? The police, the second-to-last section, the police chief and/or her, and/or his or her designee and the director of public works. We're talking about substituting the town clerk and/or his or her designee?
Yeah, that's, and you can do that if you so desire.
Either that, or you could just eliminate that paragraph, because it really talks about their review of the permit. And there's no permit required, there's no review. What I'm saying is there's no review required. So if you eliminated that paragraph, licensing would just be through the clerk. I don't think it needs to say that. Most licensing comes through the clerk's office.
Although the, the police does make a recommendation. I thought, I could be.
We're actually the permitting authority under this.
Yeah. Is that, I was going to get to that after.
Yeah, so, so this really is someone to do the work for you before you get to a council meeting and have to vote on it, so that there would be a recommendation that would come through, so you'd be able to permit it. That, that's really all this is. And as I said, it's fine if you want to just say, "The town clerk or his or her designee shall review and provide an advisory opinion to the town council." Because you're right, the applications all go to the clerk's office before they get to you. Anyhow, the clerk's office vets it. So I'm actually okay with leaving the reference to town clerk in there instead of eliminating it.
Okay, so then Jacob's point as to 124-57, the temporary mass gathering permit. Do we want to charge for something like this, charge more? I'm always trying to find more revenue sources.
You can't, you can't charge more.
Well, it doesn't mean more than the 300. He means more than zero, which is what it is right now.
We could eliminate this entirely.
Well, or you could say the fee should, well, you're right. I guess you could say up to 300, or you could, you could eliminate it.
Yeah. It seems strange to me in here, but what strikes me about it is it says, "Actual or reasonably anticipated assembly of 500 or more people for two hours," which is, I think, a very rare thing in Barrington. Is there any event that ever has?
It's not a wedding.
500 people?
It is a big wedding, but it's possible, yeah.
I'm just throwing things out.
I mean, 500 is like a, you know, like a concert.
It's a big wedding.
Yeah.
Which is the previous one.
Right, so I mean.
Not, not a "might" pay grade.
So I'm of two minds, which is, I mean, that's such an extraordinary number for the town that we could strike it and it would never happen? Or if there is in fact going to be a gathering of 500 people, I don't think it's unreasonable to say, "It's going to cost our public safety people 300 bucks to figure out what to do with 500 people gathering anywhere in town." So, one way or another, I think.
If they want.
Yeah, I was thinking just big generally, not specifically what would be 500 people. And, yeah, that's.
I mean, that's, that's. I don't, I don't think the country club could legally accommodate 500 people inside. I don't know for sure, but Chief, you might know. But that seems like an awful.
Could outside, though.
Yeah.
A good space.
So you want to delete 124-57?
I, I think it's, I'm kind of indifferent. Either we could delete it because it'll never happen, or we could keep it because the least they could do is chip in 300 bucks to cover the cost of the fire inspections and everything else, the traffic control.
Less than a dollar a person.
Yeah. But I, that's just to comment and say, I, initially, I was troubled by it because I never liked the idea of sort of making people pay to have a gathering.
I hadn't to strike it yet, so I'm.
But at 500, I'm sort of like, yeah, you don't have much to worry about.
Statewide model, and obviously, this is an issue in some other communities. That's obviously why it's in there. If you wanted to totally strike it, totally strike it. Or, as Steve said, weave it in, because it probably isn't going to impact anyone here.
So then the, the prior one, well, that's, so that's if it's on public property, so that's fine. And then for the fee, I'll come back to the fee again. For the permitting authority, can it be the clerk's office?
No, no, it has to be the county.
It has, that's, that's a requirement of the regulation?
Even under the present hawkers and peddlers licenses, you have to grant them. Yeah, if you look at the beginning of the ordinance, you must have a permit from the town council.
Okay.
It's in 124-48. It would be the very first sentence there.
So my, my concern, and what gets me to each of the comments, is we don't have any food trucks that are regulars, with the exception of Pelagi's and Dell's. If, if I have a food truck, it's a small margin business, and I have to pay $75 in every municipality I want to go to, and there's some that I only go to once or twice. Am I going to do it, or am I just not going to go there? And I think people really like food trucks. And I think some of our businesses engage them to come specifically to draw people in. And I worry that people, that some of the food trucks are just not going to get a permit in Barrington. So whatever we can do to make this the least burdensome, both in terms of time and also in terms of cost.
This is the number that was recommended by the Economic Development Committee. It is within the range, but not at the top of the range.
I thought it, oh, it is the top of the range.
It is, so it's either going to be $0 or $75.
You can't have it in 50, or, I, I was certain that they, we were told it was up to. Can we look at the statute?
I was at an event recently with Elizabeth Roberts, and she said you could reduce it to any amount you wanted.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, it says municipalities cannot charge more than 75. So you're right, you can, you can lower it, you can lower. It doesn't have to be zero.
I want to say it was at 50, and I'll never find the minutes of that meeting. The Economic Development Committee thought that, you know, whatever the, we do want to encourage businesses to come to town, but at the same time, they recognize there's some administrative burden on this. So they picked a fee which I thought was somewhere in the middle of the range for it. And I'm sorry, I don't have that. If you're able to search by food trucks, it has minutes. I'll never find it. While, while she's looking, I wanted to point out something. If we're going to keep 124-56 and 124-57 in, I think we should have a provision that would allow us to waive the permitting and waive the fee. There may be circumstances, for example, I'm thinking maybe there'll be a celebration for a Little League team, where we don't want to charge a fee, and maybe we want to encourage food trucks to come in without charging them some additional amount, even though it's.
Well, the trucks don't pay the fee.
The organizer does, I guess. But we may still want to.
Some private property. But I, I agree with you. I mean, it could be the church, the church festival. You wouldn't say, you know, come pay your fee.
I'm not sure I want all the angels to pay for.
I wish they still had the outside festival, but.
But as far as a fee from the truck, I mean, that's all we get from, if it's a restaurant, we get 1% of the food and beverage sales. And that's it. That's all, that's all the revenue that we get back.
We don't get that if it's a food truck, unless the food truck is based in Barrington. So the way that the tax revenue works is, and most of the food trucks, for some reason, I'm told, are based in Cranston. So if you sell a hamburger in Barrington, 1% of that goes to Cranston, in terms of the food and beverage tax. But we would get the, the annual fee. It's, this is why, as much as, you know, we try and draw that balance, we like to see, encourage businesses. We also don't want to have an unfair advantage. And we had some, we had one restaurateur on our Economic Development Committee who was very unhappy about it, so.
At the same time, if, if they've paid $75 a year to come to the town of Barrington, I would think it would behoove them to come more often. And in which case, they would, they would make that 75 easily.
75 times 39.
Yeah, I've got to say, when we had, and we struck it out of our ordinance, but when we had a tobacco license, it was 50. So to sell this product that kills children, we charge $50. And to sell hot dogs, we want to charge 75. I'd say, let's just, let's just strike it. I mean, at that point, you know, if you get, if you get 10 food trucks that sign up to serve food in Barrington, at $75, 750 dollars, it's not, it's not worth the effort.
It's not what?
Worth the effort.
Right, right, we have the burden anyway. And, sorry, we have the, we have the burden to do the work, no matter what, whether it's 0 or 75. And by charging something, we potentially lose the benefit that many people in town find from having food trucks. Both, both residents who want to eat at them and business owners who want to have them entice people to come to their store.
Mary, can I ask you a question? As a person who would be dealing with the permitting, you know, you're going to have to deal with the permits, so that, and the permits can be submitted electronically and all that kind of thing. It just says, "May be submitted by email or other electronic means." So I'm sure somebody could bring it in. The question is, is it worth anything to, is charging them zero make life easier, harder, indifferent?
Well, let's think about, if it was electronically, how would I get the money, because I don't have a charge card system? So that's kind of out. So I wouldn't want them to do it right now electronically. My other, I have some other concerns, like, do I need liability insurance? Such a, you know, I, I don't need any of that. Okay.
It's all going through the state. This would have been a lot easier if the state just took it all over, but instead, the state took over a lot of it, but then gave each municipality some discretion. So we're sort of in this never, never land.
So I, you know, I, you know, it's new. So, you know, we take the application. It also said 90 days. Does this have to go on the consent agenda for the council before they are accepted?
Well, you can put it on the agenda, like any license, it could be subject to. In other words, if they don't have everything in line when they get to your office, or, or, you know, I don't know how you handle the other licenses. You can say, unless everything's checked off, it doesn't go to the council. That's probably the better and fairer way to do it.
Right, right.
And then if there's some emergency situation, the council can also act on it, subject to that final permit coming in from wherever, like we do at liquor licenses.
I'm sure we'll work together.
Oh, we will. But, but they just have to decide whether they're going to strike the fee, change it to $50, or.
I understand what Jacob's saying, Mr. Bray is saying, is that, you know, are they going to invest in our community? So, when?
I think if you put on the hat of the food truck vendor, and you've got 39 municipalities in this state, and you want to have a fairly wide market area, if we're charging $75, and Providence is charging $75, you know, what towns am I going to invest my money in to get licensed in? And I, I got to think that Barrington's probably fairly, quite a ways down the list. And I'm almost thinking that we, we don't charge to encourage the food trucks to come. We probably, still not going to get many, but at least they'll, you know, the, most of the time, you either see them here supporting our businesses, or you see them here for our festivals. You don't see them just coming into town to hawk their, their food on the side of the road like you do in other communities. So my recommendation to the council would be to not charge for the licensing fee. And we can always change it down the road, but I don't think we're going to have, at $75, we're going to get many vendors coming in.
I move to strike the fee. So we could probably do this, can we do this all at once, if we just make edits?
Let's do all the amendments at once.
Yeah, so let's say, and anyone can raise, if they want to have that fee in there, we can have that separate discussion. I would like to add the language to both 124-56 and 124-57. And I'll, I'll read this more slowly in a second. But provided, however, that the town council, can I say, or its designee? I suppose we have to, we're permitting. So the town council may, in its discretion, waive the need for a permit and/or the requirement of a fee. And so what I'm saying is, the last sentence in 124-56 and 124-57, provided, however, that the town council may, in its discretion, waive the need for a permit and/or the requirement of a fee. That's, did you get that, Mary?
Not really, but I'm hoping that you'll hand it to me.
I will, I will, but you'll be able to read this.
Why are we doing this when, if we're not going to charge them, why are we going to charge, to, to propose a waiver when this is going to be, they're going to be located on public property? We've just said that they will come to the festivals, so we aren't going to charge them for the festivals on, on a town hall. And the other place was where?
Private property.
Private property.
So this, 124-56 provides a separate fee, and that would be paid for, for example, making this up, by, Holy Angels decides they're going to have a food truck night, or, you know, they're hosting something like that.
Paid by the organizer, not the truck.
So the organizer would be paying $300 to have these food trucks come. I'm suggesting that we add that we can waive that fee. And I was, we aren't, we've already proposed, and we can debate that, the $0 to the food truck. This is if, you know, the Baptists want to have the food trucks come, are we going to charge them? You know, or could we waive that? And we couldn't waive that unless we add this language.
It sounds like every event that they might be coming to, we're going to waive it. So what I'm saying is, why are we, why don't-
Yes, yes, we just eliminate all these sections.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's-
And just for now.
We could eliminate the fee, but we could also eliminate, can we just eliminate those sections? Because here's the issue, and this happened with St. Luke's doing the fish fry. I happened to be there when they were doing it, and they were coming up against the deadline, and I said, you better call Mary tomorrow to get on the agenda, because you won't have your liquor license to serve wine at this event. So it was just by chance. I don't want somebody to have to have some permit that we're not even sure why we need it, and it's going to somehow vet them from having their event. So either we add language that will allow us to waive it, or we just eliminate 124-56 and 124-57.
I think we just eliminate it.
Can I ask a stupid question? Are we required to pass some ordinance at all, or is this only that the state has enabled us to?
You need something that addresses food trucks in your town, so I'm fine with you eliminating sections here, but we need some basic food truck ordinance in place, because they're going to come looking for it.
I just feel like, I've only been at this three years, and the amount of calories burned on food trucks has just gotten me to the point where I'm saying we can't get out of our own way. Like, the legislature is spending their time writing?
I know, but that's because they've got a good lobby there. But, I mean, there are sections in here, Steve, about requiring, you know, food safety and Department of Public, you don't want someone who's just going to open a food truck to operate in your town that has not been vetted and people are going to get sick, so if you want to eliminate 56 and 57, frankly, and 55, if you want to eliminate 55, 56, and 57, and change 58 to be the town clerk's office, I think you will have started with something, and if we need to change it going forward, but I would adopt something this evening.
Okay, so-
Do we need to take, in the very first paragraph, do we still have to issue a permit?
Yes.
Yes, you need to issue a permit, even if it costs nothing to the permitee.
And by the way, if any of these food trucks, which are required to prominently display a permit from each town, do so in the front windshield, it will be a hazard for driving, because they'll have 39 of them. In addition to their inspection sticker and whatever else.
We're getting to the silly hour.
Okay, so this is what I'm going to propose, I'm going to propose that we keep 124-55 and keep $0 in there, and maybe Deborah can go out and tell people that we have a fee, and our fee is $0, but we show that it's $0 because-
And that's good, because they're going to be looking for it. They're going to be looking for, where is the permit fee, why isn't it in here? So I like that.
Yeah.
And then 56 and 57, we delete, and then we change the police chief or his designee in 52 to town clerk. And then I would say, I don't know if we can do this, but the ordinance shall take effect on January 1, 2020. Because otherwise, food trucks can't come into town tomorrow, because if we pass this tonight-
Well, that's, no, actually, the food between now and January 1, the food trucks can come into town under the old rules. I mean, it's up to you. You can put a January 1 effective date, that's fine.
Okay.
Make it effective January 1, 2020.
Those are my suggestions. Any other suggestions?
Those are mine, too.
Okay, okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt-
Excuse me, can I just, so I found something, too, and Mike, help me out here. You know, it also says municipalities may also, you know, regulate, you know, or restrict certain types of, you know, food-
Yes, in other words, you can say lemonade trucks and ice cream trucks can be in this section of town, and food trucks in another section of town. I'm not sure they want to go down that rabbit hole.
No, but also limitations, I just want to get it out tonight while we're talking about it. It might be, it says to include limitations related to location, hours of operation, noise, things of that, I just want that, you know.
And so the way most communities deal with that, if food trucks are causing a nuisance or noise late at night or whatever, they revoke the permit. So, but yes, I'm glad you're putting that out there.
Trying to get all my questions answered.
Wait until they're edible, edibles come.
Yeah.
Food trucks.
And Mike, did you see that they sent us like a application? Did you see that?
Yeah, I thought you and I would work on implementation with the application.
Just wanted to make sure all that.
So I think Mary's point is if you wanted to restrict the areas in town where they could be located, you could restrict the hours of operation, they will be subject to our noise ordinance automatically, so we're good there. You could put in there that food trucks cannot operate after a certain time, but some of these festivals, you probably want them there till 11 at night, right? I just don't know if you want to go there.
We're not going to attract, the food trucks want to make money, they're not going to come here late at night.
Yeah. Oh, you're saying this is sleepy town?
It's Barrington.
The sidewalks roll up, right?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, like, so if somebody did have a private event on their, at their home?
We're not regulating that.
Okay, just want to make sure.
But the truck still has to have a permit for itself.
Right.
Right.
Where you can't get to the private property.
A free permit, right.
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt chapter, I guess I should close the public hearing, and do I hear a motion to adopt chapter 124, Article 7, as amended?
So moved.
Oh, my God.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Sick of food trucks.
Okay, the motion still carries.
So that was Steve, and then Kate?
No, Kate was laughing. Kate has voted, yes.
Sorry, was it?
Kate seconded.
Okay.
Steve opposed.
No, I didn't.
No? No, sorry, Joy?
Joy did.
Joy seconded.
Joy, you opposed?
No, Joy seconded the motion.
Oh, Joy seconded.
The only person who opposed it was-
Sorry, there was a lot of laughter.
Steve.
Was that just out of spite?
Steve opposed.
Okay.
I just, I can't anymore.
No, no, I think he was serious.
You opposed.
Do you remember the first ordinance, it was like 25 pages?
Your nay is real, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Protest vote. Okay, next item on the agenda is to set the agenda. Can I suggest that we skip this one, and everybody who's got anything they want on the agenda, send it to me? And then, do I hear a motion to move into executive session in accordance with 4246 5A2 litigation, taxes sessions, and to discuss executive session minutes for July 29, 2019, replacement on the town council agenda for October 7, 2019?
So moved, seconded.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in executive session.